Hi, we're going to call this meeting on the Board of Education's order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you see us rolling around up here, these chairs are on wheels or a little, um, we have kids that wiggle. Anyway, we have Ms. Olson on the phone, Ms. Stowe on the way, and I believe Mr. Scher left a message that he's traveling and will be unable to make it this evening. So that's where we are. Can we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Ms. Dayton, is there a second? Ms. Raven, any discussion? All those in favor who approve the meeting agenda? Ms. Olson?
Aye.
Alright, that passes 6-0. Thank you. Alright, the next order of business is our consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Ms. Raven, is there a second? Dr. Francis, any discussion? All those in favor who approve any consent agenda? Ms. Olson?
Aye.
Alright, that also passes 6-0. Thank you very much. Okay, next up is our school welcome. So we would like to welcome one of our new principals, Alexandra.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Greenwich Board of Education, our cabinet members, and Greenwich Public School members. Thank you for coming to our new New Lebanon School. My name's Ally Bartholomew, and I'm the new principal at New Lebanon. We've got our bobcat up there. Go Bobcats! Best appearance! I'm excited to welcome you to the new New Lebanon School. Thank you to those of you who came early to see and tour our building. It's truly incredible to watch our students use their minds to solve problems, challenge one another, and discover new things in this innovative space. Although I was not here to see our students in the old building, I can say with confidence they embrace this space wholly, and our teachers seamlessly incorporate the space into their daily lessons and experiences. Our students' lives have changed in the last eight months. The time, dedication, sweat, tears, and financial contributions that went into this project are becoming a reality in front of our eyes every single day. Our students and community truly deserved this. As I watched our parents at Open House last week, I couldn't help but feel their contagious sense of pride as they walked the halls met with teachers and explored rooms and spaces they had not yet seen. We're thrilled to be able to share our space with you all this evening, and we wish you a very warm welcome. Please sit back, relax, and enjoy this short video. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and again, welcome to Greenwich. Alright, so next up is our public hearing. First up would be the GHS Student Government Conference.
Thank you for the introduction, and thank you to all the members of the board, Dr. Jones and Mr. Mayo. Good evening, everyone. I'm Lucas Grazianis. I'm the senior class president at Greenwich High School. So when I spoke here in June, I discussed a couple changes to how student government reps would be chosen and how their role would be enhanced throughout the year. Already, Zane and I and the rest of the executive committee have heard tons of new ideas for policy proposals, and that's because this year we added an interview to the Student Gov application process. We asked each rep, if you were to lead your own project on a subcommittee, what would it be, and describe your action plan. So by asking them this, we were able both to make more informed decisions about which reps to admit and to hear what issues students cared about most. Overwhelmingly discussed were environmental issues and community service opportunities. Students of all grades want to make GHS a more eco-friendly school, bringing in more compost bins and reducing cafeteria waste, and they're also eager to dive into the wealth of service opportunities that exist in Greenwich and to bring them even closer to the high school. So is it wishful thinking to expect such a large number of reps to actually dive into making their idea a reality? Well, every rep will be serving on at least one subcommittee, whether or not they're leading their own. The fact that they can organize themselves into groups and have a platform to share their own policy ideas, I think, is an enormous motivator for them to pursue whatever ideas they have. So I'm highly optimistic that at future board meetings, I'll be sharing plenty of policy proposals that are coming out of the senior reps and the rest of student government. Now, before I go, let me express how positively the changes to opportunity block have been received. Zane will touch on this more, but everyone should know how much my class appreciates the freedom and convenience that OB now offers. Even lower classes have a much better deal than last year, and OB has become a time that offers the same enriching opportunities as it did, but now, a much higher degree of flexibility. It's too early for data, but I'm expecting that we'll see a large increase in productivity, at least among seniors, because the students who don't want to be there won't be there distracting the ones who do. So thank you so much for listening. I'm looking forward to bringing back a lot more news next month. We'll have homecoming to talk about, and even the senior show, SRO, will be in our sights. Zane says that he will be singing at SRO, but I had to tell him to stop saying that because we want people to come to the show. So now, let me hand it off to him, our student body president, Mr. Zane Cotter.
Thank you, Lucas. I was actually practicing on the way here, singing in the car. But anyway, Mr. Chairman, Dr. Jones, members of the board, administrators, parents, cabinet, and renowned citizens of Greenwich, good evening and welcome. I am Zane Cotter, the student body president of Greenwich High School. And ladies and gentlemen, after a long and repetitive process of surveys from a third-party organization, student and parent-based focus groups, and a stakeholder committee that was chaired by Mr. Mayo and Mr. Pietrowski, I can confirm, the high school administration at Greenwich High School has acted in accordance with the wishes of the student body, and that reception to the opportunity block has seemingly flipped in favor of it. Seniors are now able to live out the school's motto of freedom with responsibility and leave the campus at the start of OB. Underclassmen may receive a consent form if they have other obligations or commitments to go to, and every student's ability to gain extra help or attend a club meeting before school ends is now greatly enhanced. An opportunity block is finally starting to look like what Dr. Gilde proposed nearly two years ago. Ms. Dayton, if I recall correctly, I believe you said at the last board meeting I attended, that the role of the Board of Education is to trust the school's administrators to do their job, and that the Board of Education does not need to micromanage every aspect of the school system. And I am beyond pleased to say that I agree with you. The actions of Mr. Mayo and Mr. Pietrowski on behalf of the students of Greenwich High School in the midst of a terrible logistical and legal mess should be the standard of excellence for administrators across the county and the state, and such excellence deserves to be recognized. I know I called for the applause of these two gentlemen back in June, but I will call for it again as a testament to the hard-working nature and spirit about the both of them. So please join me in giving Mr. Mayo and Mr. Pietrowski a big round of applause. Dr. Jones, welcome to Greenwich. Someone told me to tell you that the cheapest gas, if you were wondering, is on West Putnam, near the Carvel down by, yeah, Western Middle School. And because now that I'm a driver, I'm starting to realize the value of cheap gas, so I figured you'd appreciate that. But in all seriousness, Dr. Jones, I really enjoyed the themes of your speech at the convocation. And if you don't mind, I'd actually like to contribute to the discussion on a new goal that I believe the district should have for the new strategic plan. Our current strategic goals, for those of you that don't know, encompass an academic goal, a personal goal, and an interpersonal goal, in which the first described strategy is the promotion of leadership and management in the school system. In my experience, the greatest leaders are the greatest communicators. And so, it is one thing for a student to be able to make a presentation in a class about a certain topic, but it is another thing entirely for that student to be able to really articulate that information in a way that garners emotion from the audience and interest from the audience. If more attention is given to impassioned public speaking as a strategic goal, then I solemnly believe that the young people of this town will be poised to become the leaders of tomorrow, and not just the town, but the state, the country, and the world. Thank you.
Thank you. And Zane will be mentoring those students, so thank you for that.
What's that?
You volunteered to mentor the students, I heard you say.
I did.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next up, GEA Carol Sutton.
Good evening, Principal Bartholomew, Chairman Bernstein, and board members, Superintendent Jones, and cabinet, and members of the community. My name is Carol Sutton, and I'm honored to represent over 900 members of the Greenwich Education Association. And I'd like to start by saying it's wonderful to be here assembled at the new New Lebanon School with a new principal, plenty of elbow room, plenty of natural light, if it was still layout, plenty of parking, and a very vibrant decor. And again, if we haven't said it enough times, this is a project that came in on time and under budget, so we keep on saying that. It's also my pleasure to welcome everyone back to the school year. It's going to be great to welcome GEA's new partners at the podium, Lucas Grazianis and Zane Cotter, speaking for Greenwich High School, and Brian Paldunis and Cricket Diamond, who are representing PTAC. And of course, we'll welcome again, Dr. Jones, our new superintendent. There's a lot of new this year. Thank you for setting such a positive tone at convocation. There wasn't a single comment to me as GEA president that was not positive about convocation this year, and we have enjoyed and found productive all of our interactions that we've had since. So thanks to the board for bringing Dr. Jones, and we're off to a great start. Really, it's been, people ask me, "How was my summer?" And considering that we were negotiating all summer, it wasn't that great. It wasn't that much of a summer. But the good news is that on your agenda tonight is the tentative agreement between the Board of Education and GEA. And I'm pleased, I'm so proud of the hard work of this past summer, that it resulted in what is before you this evening and what was ratified by GEA this afternoon. It's hard work to get to this juncture. If you don't believe it, I can, we can go outside. I'll tell you about it. I'd like to extend a very special thank you to Jennifer Dayton, who piloted the board team so skillfully as its chair. And the association really appreciates the very respectful exchange of ideas during negotiations, and we certainly expect the board to honor the work that we all did this summer by voting to ratify the settlement this evening. So this is my third time doing, being on a negotiating team, and during this one, I had, I've really taken a lot of time to reflect on the process. And for those of you who don't know, one of the positive aspects of our negotiating process is that it's actually governed by state law. And so, the good news about that is there's a beginning and an end. We always know where the beginning and the end is. And fortunately for both sides, there's no open-ended bargaining. You're not going to hear from the teachers or the administrators that we're working without a contract for three years, or, you know, we just keep on going and going and going. That's not allowed by law. But there are a few downsides to that, and I just want to mention those because I want to throw out an idea to you guys. So I know some of you like reality TV, and some of you do, but you don't admit it, and that's fine. But sometimes it's a good way to relax. And so, how does that connect to the collective bargaining process? Is that I felt sometimes, in the past three times that I've done this, that I'm actually on Guys Grocery Games? Yes, you've seen it, you've seen it. So what happens is that on June 5th, just like in the show, they're in a supermarket with a cart, and then the, and then the starting bell goes, and like on June 5th, you know, the law says, "We're starting." And so, in the show, everyone runs around the store, throwing ingredients into a cart. And what they're hoping to do is, in a certain amount of time, they're hoping to create a product that's palatable, delicious, nutritious, attractive, beautiful. And then they get to the checkout, and somebody says, "You can't have that." And they've been shopping, and they're like, "This is what I need." And then they say, "You can't have that," or they say, "That's too expensive. Put that back." Or they say, "You can't have that because the judge is allergic to that ingredient, so you can't have that." Meanwhile, you know, this doesn't actually happen in the, in the, in the show, but I think it sort of tends to happen at the negotiating table, as we're running around filling up our cart with the things we want, then we're told we can't have them. And then the other team is trying to throw ingredients into our cart, too, that we didn't really, that we don't really want that ingredient, but we're going to do the best we can. So yeah, I can tell by your faces it's going, going a little too far. Anyway, but I didn't even get to the part where someone comes in from the parking lot and adds a new twist to the challenge, and everyone goes, "Ooh." Anyway. So it's really kind of a fun reality show, but I've really been thinking a lot about this, and the law doesn't actually set up a process that's very good for the reality of collective bargaining. And so, I want to just throw out an idea. We're not, it's not a game. We're not in a game show. And so, I'm going to throw out an idea that maybe the next time around, or in the, as we move forward to the next, to the next time we come back to the table, let's not wait for the starting gun. You know, let's not wait for the starting gun. And in fact, you know, start thinking about what it would look like if the two teams, instead of like racing through the grocery store, actually came together to talk, to discuss priorities, to get together early and often, and to really discuss matters and reach common ground. It's hard to reach common ground when you're, when you're running around with the, with the time clock going. And so, it'd be great to be able to, I don't know what it looks like, but certainly we can think about it. But it would just be tremendous if, maybe the next time around, whoever is leading the GEA and the board at that time, if we had actually come to the table, come to the starting line with a bit of a different, a bit of a more concrete plan, and until, and then get down to what it's really about is dollars and cents. You know, you talk about the other things first, so there's a priority. So that's sort of a dream and a comment and an analogy that I want you to think about, and we'll try to get that to happen in a little while. Two, a couple little mundane things, because I've been all about contract, and I feel like a weight is hopefully going to be lifted tonight. But I did notice in the first read policies that are brought up by Dr. Francis today, there was one section under security breaches, procedures, and methods of notification. And it mentions that notification of a security breach goes to Connecticut residents, that it's Connecticut residents is required. And I just want to remind you that we have a lot of employees and teachers who live in New York State. Now, I don't know why it says Connecticut, because it's, you're taking it from CADE, but let's remember, not everyone lives in Connecticut, and if there's a security breach, they would need to know. The other thing I think is really important is, you know, it's hard, it's hard to keep up with, with changes to the law, to stay a step ahead of hackers and all that. It's really a full-time job. The CADE, the policy also says that the district will educate all users regarding acceptable use and proper security procedures. And I think that needs to really be a priority because things are changing so quickly, and people can make a mistake on some platform, on some device, and have no idea that they've jeopardized anything at all. And finally, it seems from the sign-up sheet that many of the public is here tonight to speak about curriculum issues and et cetera. And I really just want to, wherever that conversation goes, one message that GEA has about curriculum is that when, when there's a lot of change, you know, wherever the change comes from, change in science, math, reading, whatever the change is, that eventually it ends up in the classroom, and it gets to the practitioners, which is the teachers, and to our students. And if there's too much change happening in too many areas, particularly at the elementary level, it really sets up, it really sets up the teachers for, you know, a very high-stress year. And, you know, everyone wants to grow. Teachers want to grow. Teachers always want to do the right thing. And it's, but it's very hard to do if the rug keeps getting pulled out, you know, and they're just getting their feet on the ground, and then something changes, and they're like, "Ah, now I have to start over again." So I think change is good, but when it comes to curriculum, it can't all happen at once if you want optimum performance from anybody. So thanks so much. Looking forward to the meeting.
Thank you, Carol. Next up is our PTA Council.
Good evening, parents, community members, teachers, Superintendent Jones, Chairman Bernstein, Principal Bartholomew, members of the board and cabinet. My name is Cricket Diamond, and I am the president of PTA Council. And with me right over here is Brian Paldunis, first VP. We begin by extending PTA Council's warmest welcome to Superintendent Jones. We are looking forward to working with you. We are so pleased that you have already spent time with many different PTAs and council, and we are grateful that your door is open to parents of the district. We would also like to welcome Principal Bartholomew and Director of Communications Sasha Houlihan. Tonight marks my inaugural comments at a Board of Ed meeting as the president of council. I sought advice from a trusted friend who said, "Be kind and keep it simple." I love it. PTA Council is made up of fif, four, sorry, 15 PTAs and 14 committees, and we kicked off the year with a great meeting two weeks ago. So what is PTA Council, and why are we here addressing you? PTA Council's main roles are to coordinate PTA efforts and programs, advocate with a unified voice, facilitate communication, interface with outside organizations, be the liaison for the state and national PTAs, promote cooperation and the sharing of information, and provide training and support. Our PTAs are pumped to start the year. There are many fall festivals coming to schools in your neighborhoods. Julie and Curtis will soon have their Parade of Nations celebrating 60 countries, 30 languages at one great school. ISD will have their color run coming up. Glenville just had a movie night for families. GHS PTA held two events for GHS staff in August, a welcome back-to-school luncheon for the entire GHS staff of 350 people, and an additional luncheon for all new GHS staff, staff members. PTAs have also kicked off their membership drives, and I want to encourage everyone to join their PTA. Our committees are gathering reps and starting to set goals for the year. There is no question that there are many volunteers working feverishly behind the scenes to make a positive difference in our schools. Parents are engaged and actively volunteering. Family engagement is so important. Please continue to make strides in incorporating family engagement into the strategic plan. We are eager to work with you, ready to roll up our sleeves. Parental involvement and support is critical to the success of our students. Henry Ford once said, "Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success." Tonight, we would like to highlight three main areas where we want to focus our energies this year. First, the health and safety of our students. This covers areas such as field remediation, school structural changes to promote safety, digital device screen time, and mental health support. Second, the programs, curriculum, and results in and from our schools. This includes access to curriculum and results information from parents, changes to curriculum and to qualifications for programs, program evaluation underway, which should point to the effectiveness and efficiency of all the district programs, ranging from special education to curriculum to digital devices, to building updates, to student activities, and on and on. Third, the communication among parents, their PTAs, council, the district, and the Board of Education. No matter how good it is, it can and should be better. As always, PTAC recognizes the multitude of voices in our district and encourages parents and PTAs to express their views directly to the Board of Education and the administration. We are so pleased to see the new District Digest newsletter. Thank you. Council has been advocating for more district communication for years. It is great. It is weekly, and we appreciate it. The three areas mentioned will play a significant role in the new strategic plan, and we want to work as a partner with the board and the district on that plan. Regarding tonight's reports, the technology program report mentions options for parental control, and the parents will be given the ability to block content, generate activity reports, and monitor their child's usage on district-issued devices. To date, the information coming from the district has been around how a parent can monitor and control screen time on a child's school device. However, that has fallen short for parents of students in K-2, where devices do not go home for a parent to access this information. Please be sure to mark your calendars for the Board of Ed Candidate Forum, which are, we are co-hosting with the League of Women Voters on Tuesday, October 15th, at Central Middle School at 7:00 PM. To meet all of our challenges, we need to focus on what's important, the students, and work together, just like Henry Ford said all those years ago, and be kind and keep it simple. PTAC and all of our school PTAs and committees stand ready to help. Thank you.
Alright, next up are our community comments. We've got a list of speakers that have signed up. Each speaker gets three minutes. Three minutes, please. We've got a long agenda tonight and a lot of speakers. I would ask that you be respectful, that you understand it's our policy to make objective criticism of district programs, but not directed to any individual. If you do that, we'll have to turn your microphone off. We'd rather not. If you do have criticism about individuals, you can always avail yourself of our fine superintendent, Dr. Tony Jones. Her contact information is on our website. Alright, with that, and Ms. O'Neill's got the timer. She'll give you a 30-second warning. Our first speaker is Claire Killian, followed by Joseph Kantursky.
My posse's coming.
Good evening, Superintendent Jones, Chairman Bernstein, members of the Board, the Cabinet, and community members. I'm Claire Kilgallen, I'm here with part of my, our Board for New Lebanon PTA, my co-president, Don Zimmerman, Karina Velez, our secretary, and our Vice President of Outreach, Mariana La Cordova. Together, we, everybody in this room has worked very hard to bring this room to fruition. I'm not going to look at Gateon, because she'll get me like she did in February. It was an emotional thing. When the school opened in February, it was a great, it was a great day. It was a culmination of a lot of hard work from so many different people, and especially thank you to the Board, the prior Board, who really fought to make sure this building happened. And now we have what all the other schools have, which is a proper facility, so that we can fly, spread our wings. And that's what we're looking for now, to have the support that we need, now that we can just focus on what everybody else focuses on, which is just our children, their development, their growth, and their potential, their maximum potential. And, or just as a side comment, one thing, we welcome Sasha coming on to communications, and we look forward to working with her to dispel some myths that appear in the press about how it's only the west side of town that has divorced parents, or parents who might have challenges with substances or things of that nature. Guess what? All around this nation, no matter what background you are, everybody has those problems, and everybody works together to address those. So it's not a west-side thing, it's a nationwide thing, it's a worldwide thing. And I just wanted to say that the community here is so positive, and I know Ally has felt it since she's been here as principal. We pull together, and there's a true love and community. I have attached, well, all the Board members and the Cabinet members got some promo from New Lebanon, which is how we make a difference for our children. And it's bilingual, which we got translated not through the district, which is another conversation we'll be having. But there are great things happening here, we want to get the word out, everybody's welcomes, comes to the school, make an appointment, we'll be happy to walk you around, show us, show you what we're about. And just for the naysayers who said this wasn't going to happen, we have 297 children in this building, which is actually an increase from the first day of school. So we will be filling every room in short order. Thank you for your support, and go Bobcats.
The next speaker is Joseph Kanturski, followed by Pat Coleman. And by the way, if I mess up anybody's name, it's not your writing, it's my reading.
You said Kanturski really well.
I know you are.
Oh, thank you so much. Thanks, thanks to the Board and for giving me three minutes. I will speak clearly, I hope. I'm Joseph Kanturski, I represent the Byram Neighborhood Association. There are two wonderful ladies who drafted me to become the Chairman of the Byram Neighborhood Association, and I am eternally grateful to them. One of them is leaving the room now, actually. But I'm here to tell you about the association. October 7th at 7:00 PM, we are going to have another meeting. And I would encourage all of you, if you haven't already been to the Byram Neighborhood Association meetings, to join us that time. It is in St. Paul's Community Room. We have a number of things that we've already started initiatives. We're here to represent and serve the community and its interests, and we're here to listen to everyone's ideas. Our Land Use Committee has already initiated an ordinance, a Blight Ordinance, to address properties in town here in Greenwich, in Byram, but also we're hoping that will be applied to the rest of the town. We are anxious to keep and, our input into the Plan of Conservation and Development Meeting, which actually happens to be going on now. Ten years ago, we wrote a master plan, and believe it or not, there are still pieces of it that need to be implemented. There's a nine-story building going up in Portchester, I don't know if you've heard about it. We've been in touch with Katie Toluca, she's been in touch with us. We're going to be attending meetings to express as best we can the interests that Byram has in what's going to happen with traffic. That's going to be a terrible hunch. But I happen to be married to the clerk of the Building Committee. I just want to say it's pretty amazing that we're all standing here and sitting here in this room. And you think back five, six years ago, who knew? But now it's here. So I want to give a real quick recap of things that are still to happen, that people here might say, well, where's this and where's that? The trees, they started planting them la- last week. The fields, the sod is going to be put in the end of the month, they're going to put up a temporary fence to protect the sod. It expects to be open in the mid-April next year, just in time for baseball, and they're going to be doing testing for the subsoil and the topsoil for any toxic problems. Playground will be ready for the kids September 23rd, which is right around the corner. The sound barrier, we're looking into, we have someone down for this date, actually in a couple of weeks, who will be looking at the possibility, the insistence, basically, that we want to do, we want to have, to put up a sound barrier between here and 95. There will be fencing put up for privacy slats for the Mead Avenue people. Lighting has, the town has approved the lighting, and it has approved the hours of exterior lights. October 7th, 7:00 PM, St. Paul's Community Room, hope to see you there. I had a tagline for the Byram Neighborhood Association, and the tagline is, "It's better in Byram." And I had some people say to me, "What's better in Byram?" And the thing I like about it is, everything's better in Byram, and we really believe that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Pat Coleman, followed by Diana Martinez.
Thank you. My name is Pat Coleman, and I attended the June Board of Ed meeting at the Coscop School. There, I spoke about the death threat my daughter received and the inept response on the part of the Deputy Superintendent and the old Greenwich School Principal. An article was published the next day, in Greenwich time. The Deputy Superintendent was quoted, and I paraphrase, "We did our due diligence, everything was handled in the appropriate manner, and determined it was a credible threat. Those statements are dismissive, misleading, obtuse, and simply not true. No formal due diligence was done until after 600 children returned to the school, unknowing that a threat was present. Screenshots are not proper due diligence." I've had candid discussions with the interim Superintendent and one of the elected Board of Ed officials. The Superintendent shared his frustrations and acknowledged my situation, and said his hands were tied. When I met with a Board of Ed official this summer, we spent 90 minutes discussing the situation and the dozens of other matters that had been created due to incompetence and gross negligence within the system. In both discussions, I was simply told to forge ahead, yet no action. It's why I'm here, this cannot go on. I want answers, and I want to know who is being held accountable. This is the common denominator you're going to hear tonight in moving ahead. We are wasting tax dollars, families are unnecessarily being put through hell, dozens of families are so fearful of coming forward with their own situations, fear of retribution is heard over and over, and I believe that's now starting to turn. I went to the website. "The Board of Ed is the governing body of the district and shall govern the district in such a manner that it gets the national standard for governance, oversight, public engagement, stewardship of the public education system." I reached out to the Board of Ed in April. I sent a five-page letter detailing my situation. I got a two-sentence response, "See the interim head, interim Superintendent head." That went nowhere. It's time for this nonsense to stop. You all need to start doing your jobs, and you need to start listening to the people. They have real situations, there's nothing fabricated at all, they're hurting. I sat in a group of 60 people two nights ago, sobbing. I mean, it's crazy. What are we going to do? Should we just get advocates and get attorneys? File letters to the state and continue these complaints? Why not sit down and have a conversation? And do what's right? This is a great town, and I'm dug into this town.
Time. Thank you. The next speaker is Diana, Diana Martinez, followed by David Russell.
Good evening. Our son is a fourth grader at North Mayonnaise School. He doesn't love Legos, and he isn't a math genius. All assumptions made by people when they hear our son has autism. He's an awesome kid, but he has serious learning issues, as well as a coordination disorder. His teachers and administrators love him, and he adores them. It took us a long time to speak up about what was wrong with his program, because everyone was so kind to him, and we felt guilty. In terms of forming a relationship with him, his school has hit it out of the park. But the system's expectations for his learning are low, and we've often felt that the school was humoring us instead of taking him seriously as a student. Surely, we've learned to keep our expectations in check over the years of understanding the extent of his disability. But we never thought we'd have to fight to make sure our son was more than a mascot for the school. Receiving high fives in the hallway, but failing on every measure used to assess him, even failing to meet the minimal 80% mastery on his IEP goals. He is a student who can learn, but the system keeps failing him. At the end of kindergarten, our son was due for his triennial evaluation. When we showed up at the PPT, the administrator informed us that they weren't testing him, because they knew he would qualify for SED services again. We were outnumbered, surrounded by seven educators. We had to make the case for testing our son, so that we could establish a baseline of where he is, so that we could write good goals that met him where he is, while pushing him to the next level, so that we could prioritize what to teach him. The team finally agreed to test him, but our spirits were so low when we left that day, realizing they expected to pass him through year to year, whether he was learning or not. Raise your hand if you, as a parent, have had to make the case for your child to be tested, testing that is mandated by law and that should be routine in any credible educational system. But somehow, you had to be the one to advocate for the database goals and progress monitoring, because the professionals around you showed no interest in measuring your child's actual skill level. Now, our son's IEP was filled with people who were consulting and providing services. But I learned at the end of seconds that his newbie CBA had never actually met him. She was somehow consulting through email about a child she had never seen. Raise your hand if you ever thought your child was receiving services that he or she wasn't actually receiving. Now, how did we learn this? Only when we obtained an advocate and made a FERPA request were we able to see the actual state of our son's education. Prior to that, our exchanges with the school were filled with cute stories about our son.
Thank you. If you'd like, you can submit your comments to the Board via email. All right, so, just David Russell, followed by Christine DeGash.
It was, hi, I'm David.
Yeah, I'm David. Yeah, I got it. I'm Diana something, I'm an attitude. Thank you. It was only when we obtained an advocate and made a FERPA request were we able to see the actual state of our son's education. Prior to that, our exchanges with the school were filled with cute stories about things our son had said or done, but when we want to refer to an observation done on our son in which third graders came to read the kindergarteners on the, to the kindergarteners on the carpet, it should have been a feel-good moment, but our son was described as rolling around on the floor and crawling away, and turning his back on the books being read to him. Three books in total. In fact, we knew, my son, he loves to read, which prompted us to question why he didn't have a chair to sit in, he has low muscle tone, or why a book he knew wasn't selected, or why no one suggested a shorter book, since he was, since the sitting was hard for him. Raise your hand if your child didn't receive proper supports in class that would have allowed your child to access the curriculum. Who is in charge of the supports of modification or modifications? That has never been clear. The person who was always with him is his paraprofessional, but paraprofessionals aren't trained to modify the curriculum or decide what kind of supports are needed on the spot. Furthermore, testing that was finally done by the school revealed that our son was performing in the average range, and we were told he probably even had an above-average IQ. But when we asked for an IEE, we learned that he had serious cognitive challenges. When we looked more closely at the school's testing, it was filled with asterisks and notes that read, "Scores achieved with non-standardized administration," because he was given prompts to answer questions, which disqualifies the results. Raise your hand if the school ever overstated your child's progress, so that you had to dig in, you had to find the truth yourself about his, about how well they were actually doing. We had to fight to get our son one-on-one pullouts, so that he could learn at his own pace, but now he's all alone for half his day, and there isn't enough classroom space for pullouts. So he has to, he has to, he has them in a room that is shared with an ESL class, or he's in the hallway. Many of the best school systems in Fairfield County have an autism support classroom for kids who need support, so that they have each other, and so that trained people can, can support their needs. The GPS insists on being inflexible and only uses an inclusion model.
30 seconds.
An inclusion model may be cheaper, especially if proper supports aren't in place, but in the long run, with so many parents of children with autism seeking outplacement, the inflexibility ends up costing more to the system. Granted, our son loves his time with his peers, and we agree that for most kids, inclusion to the largest extent possible is the right thing to do, except the supports need to be in place, and educators that are with them need to be trained.
Time. Thank you very much. The next speaker is Christine DeGash, followed by Jenny Socky.
Good evening. I wanted to start with a quote tonight that has had me reflect lately, and that is, "There can be no keener revelation of a society's soul than the way in which it treats its children." I've been waiting six years for the Society of the Board of Education to follow state laws with regards to my child, the IDEA Act, state and Connecticut laws and guidelines, state compliance, and finally give my child an appropriate education. Six years of my child's civil rights under the IDEA Act have been violated time and time again. Delay, deny, and lie. My first indication that we even had an issue, after reaching out to zero to three, I was told in the hallway halfway through kindergarten that my child wasn't retaining any information. On the last day of kindergarten, I was told with great emotion by her paraprofessional that had pulled her out for RTI, that she was very, very, very concerned. That conversation haunts me to this day, five years later. After three and a half years of fighting for an independent evaluation, we were given a monster size of diagnosis. ADHD, an attentive type, central auditory disorder, severe language disorder, severe memory processing disorder, dyslexia, dyscalculia, dysgraphia, severe fine, poor motor skills, and clothing sensitivities, and more. We had no choice to unilaterally pull our daughter after she was bullied for being identified as not learning. We put her in Eagle Hill, and we were grateful for we did. She was finally getting an appropriate education, and we witnessed our child thrive for the first time ever. And it was ripped away, and we had to send her back to JC. A full year back, she's regressed, and it's terrible. She was recently erasing her working class, with an aide comes up to her, rips the pencil out of her hand, breaks it in half, slaps it back, back down on the desk, tells her to go reset herself, because she needs breaks every half an hour, and to stop crying. No consequences happened to the aide, and my child nonchalantly is accused of lying. So I ask you, when is this going to end? It's now. You see these parents here? We are united, and we have an army of 150 more in the shadows, and every day, parents are coming out. Together, we are not going to be intimidated anymore by retribution by the district, and we will request our FERPUs, request actual data, request evaluations, educate parents and their rights, and start filing those complaints, one after one after one, until there is appropriate education for all students in Greenwich. And when there is lasting change, and are so very And when there is lasting change in our so very broken system and when the removal of administration and administrators who break the laws and violate our children's civil rights, that is when we will begin to see a society that cares about our children.
Jen, yeah, I'm just coming up to the last one, can we do it?
That's good.
And Jeff is the next speaker.
Hi, how are you? I'm Jen Sochi.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. So my name is Jen Sochi and I have a son Gabriel in the 2nd grade at Glenville School and he's been diagnosed with a reading disorder by a neuropsychologist in March of 2019. So in the fall of 2017, my husband and I asked for a speech evaluation, which was denied for the reasons that are still unclear. As the year went on, Gabe continued to struggle with his letter sounds and then to read familiar words, especially when there were no pictures or other context clues. Though he has made some improvements. Gabe frequently identifies a word incorrectly even after having just read the word correctly earlier in the same text. During the entire year, we, oh, he also has remember, trouble remembering how to spell words and applying the rules of grammar and spelling and so forth. During the entire year, we asked over and over, is there going to be some kind of testing? And we were told we are still deciding on what kind of testing. So then we went into the fall of 2018 and here we are. We were very proactive in letting the staff know Gabe's reading struggles. We continued to discuss his reading struggles throughout 2018 and into 2019 with his teachers, learning specialists, and assistant principal. But I was assured he was making progress, so there was no need for testing. Because we were not provided the data to support this decision, I'm not really sure how this came to be. Perhaps they were not adequately trained or have the knowledge and the skills that are necessary. Perhaps the measures that were used were not reliable or had validity. On the way home from school one day, I asked Gabe, "How do you think you're doing in school?" And he said, "It's like this, Mom. We're all on this stick and some of us fell off this stick into the trash. But now I'm not quite at the bottom, I'm kind of halfway in the middle." This is the saddest thing I've ever heard him say. Since I asked for speech evaluation when he was in kindergarten, there were many roadblocks. I had them all dated and supported documentation. Over the course of time with delay of action, our son still continues not to meet benchmark reading levels. Research has proven in grades kindergarten and 1st grade is when children should be identified and given the appropriate instruction. However, students seem to be given RTI over significant periods of times, some over many, many years. From personal experience, I was told that since my son was making progress, this shows he probably does not have a disability. Again, without data to support such a statement. School districts shouldn't use RTI as an excuse to delay or worse, not to evaluate a child suspected of having a disability. Two years after I have asked for an evaluation of my son, he is still not receiving the appropriate instruction for his reading disorder and is receiving RTI Tier 3. So for all the families that are saying that there is a delay, I hundred, 100% is in support of this through actual and documented experience.
Time, thank you.
Thank you. Mike Beck, followed by Lindsey Feige. Lindsey, you're next.
Good evening. My name is Mike Goff. And I'm here to share some experience and data that should inform any audit or study of Greenwich Public Schools' special education. We often hear of the rights of parents of special needs children to pursue due process when they feel their child is not getting appropriate services. Every time a due process case is resolved, the hearing decision is posted on the State Department of Education's website. Between 2012 and 2018, parents across the state of Connecticut pursued due process 1,400 times. About 1,300 of these cases were settled. 97 cases were fully adjudicated. A fully adjudicated case is probably the best way to get a clear, fact-based view of how a school system is supporting or not supporting a child with special needs. In these cases, witnesses testify under oath, documents are entered into evidence and scrutinized, parents, school representatives, experts, and lawyers make their best case. And an impartial hearing officer makes and documents a decision based on the facts and the law. I can tell you, pursuing a fully adjudicated due process strategy is stressful, time-consuming, and expensive. For example, our case took 15 months with 18 days of hearings and we were out of pocket hundreds of thousands of dollars before the case was decided in our favor. The fact is, while due process is available to all parents, I can assure you, it is not a real option for most people. So most parents have to settle and their cases are dismissed. In a settlement, parents must agree not to ever talk about their case. This gag order does not apply to fully adjudicated cases. Of the 97 cases that were fully adjudicated over the past seven years in Connecticut, 88 of them were with school systems outside of Greenwich. An impartial hearing officer decided those school systems won their cases over 80% of the time. Not great, but pretty good. So how did Greenwich do? During the same time period, Greenwich lost eight of their nine cases. This means Greenwich lost about 90% of the time while the rest of the state lost less than 20% of the time. Greenwich has the worst record in the state by far. How can this be? For years ahead of PPS, the town's attorney and school administrators have told parents that Greenwich Public Schools can provide what children with disabilities require. The fact is, Greenwich loses these cases so often because Greenwich fails to provide appropriate service to children with disabilities. For years ahead of PPS, on behalf of the district, has used the burden of due process as a shield against parents' well-founded concerns instead of fixing special education in Greenwich. It's clear that current PPS leaders have not accepted their issues with Greenwich Special Ed and any audit of Greenwich Special Ed should not be led or controlled by current PPS team members. The audit should be led at the board level and parents should have a voice in the process.
Thank you. Jeff, we've got a long meeting ahead of us, so if you could, uh, thank you. The next one is Lindsey Feige, followed by Dawn Fortunato.
Hi, I'm Lindsey Feige. I have three kids, all with special ed needs of some sort. I have a child who went deaf in 2nd grade, fully in both ears, within two months. I was told by his class teacher that he was not deaf and they would not provide any services. They would make sure that his hearing aids would not connect to the system. They would not put balls on the bottom of the chairs so that he, that his sound would not reverberate around the room. I was told that they would make sure that he was in a classroom that did not have acoustic tiles. We fortunately have a teacher for the deaf, who's amazing, who swooped in and decided that that was actually all not true and that they would actually provide services. I also have two kids who were, I asked to test for dyslexia in 2nd grade, I think in each. And both times, I was told for absolutely no reason that they would not be tested. No evaluations, no reasons. Both children have tested as dyslexic. One's so severely dyslexic that in all four categories of visual retrieval, which is a type of dyslexia, she is in the 10th percentile or less nationally. She was literally failing in math and every other subject because she could not access the reading curriculum. Even in the next year when we had an IEP, her teachers didn't read it when I got to the first meeting. I got to the first meeting and her teacher didn't know that she needed to verbalize things because she's an auditory learner. Everything was still mad minutes right in front of you. She wasn't allowed to talk in the classroom despite the fact that her IEP actually said that she's supposed to talk in the classroom. Um, let's see, what else can I tell you? Uh, I have a seven-year-old who was sent in, um, an ambulance, strapped down in an ambulance at 9:15 in the morning because my, uh, because the assistant principal at the school decided that he could no longer be there that day. He, she, um, spoke to 211, which is a state representative, state, state agency that is basically the version of 911 for psychological issues. The 211 told her explicitly, on the record, that it would be illegal to send my child in an ambulance to a psychiatric hospital. She did anyway. She told me that she would make sure that I lost custody of my children in my divorce if I tried to push that from happening anyway. This, um, assistant principal is now one of our principals. We promoted her after that. Let's see, what else can I tell you about my experience? We have sued the district on numerous occasions. We have been successful each time. What's the time?
30 seconds.
30 seconds, thank you. We've been successful each time. I am now a part of SED educated Greenwich, which is designed to help every parent and so anyone you know out here who might have needs, please pass it on. We are going to make sure that every single kid in this district and every parent in this district gets what they actually deserve, which is a free and appropriate education. And we're going to demand that they get it. Thank you.
Next up is Dawn Fortunato, followed by Dr. Lauren. Bader.
Good evening, everybody. Uh, Dawn Fortunato, District 3. So there's a couple of things I wanted to bring to your attention this evening. Uh, the first is, uh, I have two children that are, um, special education. I had to find them myself through, uh, making a FERPA request and seeing that they weren't meeting the benchmarks and were part of the achievement gap. And then I have another, um, my nephew, I actually, uh, do his PPTs because he just seems to be slipping through the cracks. He's in Greenwich High School and, um, I started attending his PPT meetings two years ago. And, um, he's been denied a reading program. He is in 11th grade. When he started there in 9th, he was on a 3rd grade reading level. He was given a specialist and she was working with him one-on-one and the woman was great. She was working miracles. All of a sudden, she retired. Outside of the PPT meeting, um, the school-based team decided, without giving us prior written notice, which I don't think is legal, to give him, throw him in special ed with eight other children for a woman that had no similar qualifications at a PPT. When I asked if she had those qualifications, she said in her mind she did. I said, "No, I needed to see those on paper, please." She could not provide them. I've asked for pre-imposed data. I can't get that either. The kid cannot read, he cannot write. He takes notes by taking his cellphone and taking pictures of what is going on in class. And, um, when he first came to the high school, they were putting him in grade levels. He wasn't on where his peers were, so they were expecting him to go into that class to learn. And I was in, you know, we were getting, um, calls that he was falling asleep in class, he was on his phone. And I said, "Well, if you put yourself in his shoes, walking into that classroom is like him going to a foreign country." He doesn't know the language. He's not at that level. So I'm not sure what they were expecting, uh, him to be able to achieve there. Um, at the last PPT, I asked for his attendance record. He had, uh, missed the reading class because he was uncomfortable and no one can, wanted to listen to what we had to say. He missed the class and skipped 43 times. Eleven of those were excused. When I asked who called him in, um, they couldn't offer that information, just it was a woman. We thought it was you. No, it most certainly wasn't me. So, uh, following the PPT meeting, he received an email that he should go down and try to get credit for those courses. Which I thought was kind of strange. I mean, if he can't read, he can't write, and we're just really pushing him through because he's only having one independent evaluation throughout his whole curriculum in Greenwich Public Schools, starting at pre-K. Uh, I gotta ask what's going on. Alls we hear is, when we ask for an IEE, "Denied, request denied, request denied, request denied." I mean, come on. We're not giving him the skills we need. So are we setting him up to be a drug addict? Or is he gonna clog the prison system? I'm not sure.
Lauren Bader, followed by Divya Shanshi.
Alright. Hi, my name is Lauren Bader. I'm a local pediatrician and Greenwich resident and I'm going to shift gears a little bit between what all these very courageous parents have been speaking about. Um, I'm here to address concerns over screen time use in the Greenwich school systems and I've just prepared a brief statement. The American Academy of Pediatrics has clear age-based guidelines on screen time use. While the AAP and I myself recognize that are, there are many benefits to media use, there is also a lot of concern about overuse or inappropriate media use. The AAP recommends a screen time limit of two hours per day. I think it is safe to say that we would all agree that our children are spending far more than just two hours a day with a screen in front of them. Now with the use of iPads and Chromebooks that are pervasive in our children's school system, uh, often required for homework as well, I would estimate that schoolchildren are using upwards of six-plus hours of screen time, uh, per day. One of the main issues is that we just don't know exactly how much screen time children are using in the schools. There is no way right now to gauge that, there's no data on that, and without any knowledge, it is difficult to have a fair assessment on the benefits or risks of screen use in the school setting. There are now two recognized mental health disorders associated to media use. The first is called problematic internet use and the other is internet gaming disorder. It is estimated that up to 8% of children and adolescents between 8 and 18 years old suffer from these disorders. Symptoms include preoccupation with media activity, decreased interest in offline or real-life relationships, unsuccessful attempts to decrease use, and withdrawal symptoms. Studies have also shown that children with more than two hours of screen time use per day have a five-time higher risk of being overweight or obese in adolescence. There are clear health risks to general screen time use. However, more research is certainly needed to clarify potential differences in screen use for educational purposes versus leisure or social media activities. Without this data, we simply cannot be assured that screen time use in the school setting is safe for our children.
30 seconds.
Thank you. That is the end of my statement. I would, I did not know everything that was happening at this board of ed meeting tonight. But I just want to say, I really appreciate all of the courageous parents that have gotten up to speak. As a pediatrician, it really, um, speaks to me that all of you are here advocating for your children, which is so necessary. And really, it's shameful to hear the response of the Greenwich Public School systems and I hope that you can please all help these parents. Thank you.
Next speaker is Divya Shanshi, followed by Jennifer Wick.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Divya Shanshi and I'm a freshman at Greenwich High School. And today I'm here to talk about the smart tech movement. Imagine a world decades from now where kids have computer chips transmitted into their brains and everything occurs in a split second because they now have unlimited access to a supercomputer. I mean, at that point, they weren't even being considered humans anymore, but robots. And it all traces back to one reason, screen time in school. As a freshman, I only received my iPad after 4th grade when it was being distributed from preschoolers to 5th graders. And I know, how can I be one to talk if I only had it for one year? But you have no idea how much our lives have changed in those 10 months. It's as if one year, we were putting pen to paper like traditional students, but the next moment, you walked into a classroom, everyone was disconnected from their classmates and plugged into a completely different universe, one where you and your device only mattered. Soon, the competition wasn't about how many math equations you could complete within a minute or how long your essays were, but how attractive your phones looked or the quality of the pictures you took. These devices were not only transforming our daily routines, but our character as well. Students started becoming more reserved and would opt for interacting with their iPads rather than their best friends. Nearly every assignment that could have been completed on paper was done on the iPad and more than half the day was spent exploring the device's features and apps. We were not learning from an adult anymore. We were teaching ourselves. That's why we started the smart tech movement, to limit use of technology in public elementary schools. We believe that an excessive amount in classrooms hinders social development and takes away from traditional teacher-based learning. Our goal is not to eliminate technology in the public school system as a very useful tool for the future, but make sure that it is being used appropriately and measured amounts by these young children. I created a website last month, SmartTechMovement.com, which explains who we are, what our mission is across the district, and most importantly, the smart tech petition. Please sign the petition if you agree with the movement and its benefits to our school system. Please make a difference. Take action and prevent your children and the generations after from losing the value of human interaction. Lend a year today because we are the leaders of tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, Jennifer Wick. Last name is Wick? She's not here. Okay, so Dr. Shanshi, I think you were next, if you wanted to speak. Uh, followed by, I'll do the best I can here. Madhita?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, hello. Uh, good evening. Um, so a few months ago, I happened to see a photograph of a group of young elementary school students sitting in circle time around a carpet, headphones on, staring intently at their iPads. Now, this particular photograph was featured in a Greenwich Public Elementary School newsletter. And that's simply- And that simply broke my heart. And I knew then and there that if I did not say or do anything about this, I am in fact silently consenting to this. My area of expertise is not education. I do not have a degree in education. But as a pediatrician, I think that, I know that I can claim a certain degree of expertise as far as children are concerned. My, I understand that the issue of technology in classrooms is a divisive one. I know that blending technology and education is very complex because there are so many variables. And so for this reason, for now, all I'm requesting the Board of Education to do is please, please look at the use of screens for our kindergartner, first graders, and second graders in the school system, simply because they are at their most vulnerable because of their developing brains. My question to the Board of Ed is this: Please tell us, what proof is there that personalized learning has to be delivered to five, six, and seven-year-olds by digitizing the classroom? Right? I mean, the more I've researched the whole topic, the more I am convinced as to why experts deem this to be the biggest social experiment ever conducted on our children. And, and I, you know, I see that parents ask pediatricians, their psychologists, experts, such intelligent questions about the well-being of their children. I appeal to the parents in this community, please, very respectfully, let us ask the Board of Education, what benefit do five, six, and seven-year-olds and eight-year-olds derive by clicking, swiping, or swirling their fingers across a lit screen? I, so some of us have gotten together to form what we deem as a smart tech movement. We appeal to as many parents as possible to please join our movement. We are not anti-tech, but we do want to make one point very clear. What we are doing with young children is in effect making them tech users. Because learning technology is very different. Learning technology is about learning coding and logic. So that's it. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. So I'm sort of, you know, continuing on this theme, and I just want to sort of take a slightly different approach to this. So I just have a very simple question, in terms of why won't the Greenwich Public School System share data with parents around the way devices have been used and how devices have been monitored, and how the benefit of these devices is being evaluated? You know, on the face of it, it seems like a very reasonable ask, but parents have been asking for this kind of data ever since the pilot was initiated in 2014. And it's been so many years. My child was one of the first kids in that pilot. And the pilot somehow got rolled out on a broad scale across elementary schools. And yet, parents have absolutely no insight into what was the rationale? What did the Greenwich Public School System see in terms of benefits that they rolled it out so broad scale? You know, and I think we all agree that education is a business, and even running public schools is a big business. You know, you have to, you have budgets that you have to manage. You have capital expenditures that you have to justify. So I think a lot of us are asking that, you know, if you had to justify the expenditure of putting one-on-one iPads, iPads in the hands of every child in elementary school, you would have had to build a business case to do that. And so parents are asking, pretty legitimately, as taxpayers, how was this expenditure justified? What was the cost-benefit analysis done that allowed you to roll this out? And so, you know, again, as parents and as taxpayers, we feel entitled to have access to this kind of information. And over the years, we've made different appeals for this data, but parents have not received this data. So it sort of, you know, raises this question of why is this shroud of secrecy around this issue? You know, what is up with this stoic silence on this issue? Why aren't our questions being answered? You know, why aren't people, why aren't parents getting the information that they're asking in respectful, legitimate ways of the Board of Education? You know, so what will it take? I mean, do you want the tone of this conversation to turn villagering? You know, do you want us to sort of, you know, get parents together, galvanize everybody, you know, hold up, you know, posters and march outside schools to get this information? I don't think so. Because we're not, you know, we don't live in that sort of society. So let's not get that. Okay, so we've started the smart tech movement because we feel like as parents, when we come and raise this issue, we're not getting any attention. So we've started the smart tech movement. So if you parents believe that this is an issue, please join the movement and help us raise our collective voices so we can get access to information that we rightfully should have and be part of the decision in terms of how much device uses our children are subjected to. Thank you.
I actually miss somebody, so forgive me one second. Anila Ahmad. And then next up is Walter Jaski.
Good evening, everybody. I don't know everyone, so I'm just gonna say everyone. I'm also here for the smart tech movement. I am just a concerned parent. And I just want to say that when my now-fifth grader got access to the iPad in first and second grade, I have noticed a major difference between her and my older child. And she just constantly asks if she can go on the iPad to do some work, and, you know, she'll get distracted. And now my kindergarten, I have a kindergartner in ISD, and I don't want her to go on the iPad for many reasons. I just recently saw an article about adults with screen time and how much we are so addicted. Where does this start from? Everything starts from a certain foundation. And it's all monkey see, monkey do. We are so oblivious to what we are showing our children and what we're telling them that things are okay, when in fact, they're not. If we are not the ones to say to them, "This is not okay," then they will never know because they're just new into this world. They have so much to learn. And I don't know, because I'm not a teacher, but, you know, I guess when you hold an iPad, aren't you like compromising, like for young kids, fine motor skills and, you know, public speaking, socializing, making new friends, when you just want to focus your eyes on a screen? And I don't know if this is a good analogy, but in our religion, we have to learn the Quran. When I was growing up, we had to go to a mosque and learn from somebody. But now we do it over Skype. And even though it's still being accomplished, it used to be done in a year, where now it's taking three to four years. It does, the kids get distracted, and they lose sight of what is really important. And everyone is, I just feel like your children are not, actually, my whole goal about this is more about mindfulness. I don't think the children are being mindful when they're handed a screen in front of their face. They are not aware of their surroundings, and they are not going to learn to their most potential if you just give them a little screen. They're little kids, and they don't know any better. So we have to be smarter and teach them the right way. Please, let me ask you a question. Please raise your hand if you grew up in kindergarten without a screen. Okay, I think we all did okay. And Zen, I know you're younger, Zen. What about you? Did you grow up without a screen in kindergarten?
I did.
Well, your speech was absolutely exceptional, so I think you turned out well. So I think that proves my point. We don't need a five. It's not a law.
Walter Jaski, followed by John McRae.
My name is Walter Jaski. I'm a member of the community with two small children, and I'm also a neighbor who's home above the property here on the west side. My concerns are different than many of the concerns and challenges raised by others tonight. In any case, as a member of the community with two small children, we are so happy that the new school is here, and we plan to send our children here, and are very grateful for all the hard work done into that. As a homeowner, however, with my home right next to the property, it's been a challenging process, and it remains, it remains so. And I'm not alone in that. The redevelopment of the site has changed the quality and the character and the privacy of our homes, particularly for those of us on sort of the southwestern side here. And a lot of this has to do with the fact that there's a very small buffer between the school property, the parking lot, and our homes. It's less than nine feet in some places. And there's no ordinance or regulation in planning zoning about this, but I know it's sort of an area that's being discussed even tonight in the conservation and development plan process, sort of the buffer zone between schools and residential properties. That's leading to a lot of issues for us that relate to safety, security, and privacy. There are a lot of concerns coming up from folks who live over here. The building committee's been great and responsive in trying to address some of those things, and the Byer Neighborhood Association's also been involved, and we're very grateful for that. But I don't think that sort of their jurisdiction fully covers it. And I think I'm here to make a request that, make a request that we establish a small working group between appropriate representatives of the Board of Education and those abutting the property to address some of the concerns in a more holistic manner than I think the building committee can address. An example of that, for example, is the lighting. You heard the judgment from the neighborhood association speak about the fact there's been discussion about turning the lighting off at night. It's been on for the last three weeks. It's very bright. It's out of proportion and out of character with everything else around it, and very different than any lighting that exists in this town for a lot of reasons. And there may be some timing, there may be some timer put on that lighting to turn it off by a certain time, but I think there'll be required a sustained commitment by the facility staff here to maintain that timing over time. And there are a number of other issues like that that sort of go beyond just the initial development to help us regain some of our privacy and quality of life back. So I'll be sending an email to Ms. Bartholmew, Ms. Toni Jones, and the superintendent to set up a small working group to discuss some of these issues in a holistic manner with the building committee, to address the remaining concerns, and to keep a line of communication over with each other between neighbors over time. So thanks.
All right. The next speaker is John McRae, followed by Nancy Mosback and Leslie Kraft.
Mr. Bernstein, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Jones, members of the administration, parents, community members. My name is John McRae Jr. I'm a lifelong resident of Greenwich, a product of the Greenwich Schools, retired educator with almost 40 years of teaching in the state of Connecticut, eight of which were here in the Greenwich Schools. I've decided to speak this evening in response to an op-ed piece recently printed in the local paper. When I hear people feel there is too much screen time during the school day, I feel they are misinformed or have not been in the classrooms to see how technology really works as a teaching tool. When I was growing up, we had reference materials like the dictionary, encyclopedia, calculators in the classrooms. The iPads are used in such, with an emphasis on time management and efficiency. If parents observed the children in the classroom, they would see them using the camera on the iPad to take real-time photos, allowing them to study and write in science and social studies. They quickly use their calculator when solving math problems. They keep a file bank with new words and use many other apps to help them. You will not see them spend hours in front of their iPad to keep them quiet doing busy work while the teachers work with the other students around the reading table. Let me tell you that it's not enough these days for a teacher to stand in front of a classroom saying, "I have all this information, and I'm going to give it to you." These days, you need to engage students, make them hungry for knowledge, and meet their needs for inquiry. We're in the 21st century, and why would you not use the most advanced technology available to assist in student learning? The use of technology, however, is not the total answer. You can never replace the personal interaction students have with their teacher, their fellow students, their family, and their friends. Visit a classroom, and you will see students reading books to each other, playing math games, having discussions about historic people, and comparing the nutrition each has in their lunch, all without the use of technology. Could they use their iPads? Perhaps. But as my late wife Brenda McRae, a teacher at ISD, would say, "There are times for technology, and there should be times without it." A good teacher knows the importance of interpersonal engagement coupled with the use of technology as an increased learning. I respect the medical field's concern over screen time. I respect the value of the op-ed article as a need for discussion and clarification, and I respect the author's distinguished medical opinion and her right to share it. I do not believe there is an overabundance of screen time in the classroom. However, I do believe the concerned public may wish to view the screen time children have at home with their parents and family. I see children in strollers watching videos on smartphones, children sitting with their parents at restaurants playing a video game on a tablet, all in the name of keeping the kids quiet. We should be concerned about children losing the interpersonal engagement they have in school when they go home, because parents find it easier to sit their children in front of the screen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. So next up is Nancy Mosback, Nancy Port. If there's anybody, that's it for signed-up speakers. If there's anybody else that would like to address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item, I'd ask you to line up over there by the rock wall so that we can include this on. Thank you.
Thank you, Board of Education, and I sympathize with all the parents here tonight. We're addressing a different issue. Welcome, Dr. Jones. We are also new families to the Greenwich community, and we'd like to air a significant grievance and complaint to the Greenwich Public School Board of Ed regarding safety and transportation issues related to a bus stop, specifically in our case, at Forest Avenue and Brownhouse Road in Old Greenwich. And we petition quite seriously to reinstate that bus stop immediately. This complaint and petition are filed to the Board of Education regarding the unsafe, inequitable, and unjust handling of the bus stop located at this stop. Our grievance is that this bus stop located at Forest Avenue and Brownhouse Road for Eastern Middle School was canceled midday on a school day without any prior notification, despite the fact that the stop was listed on the Greenwich Public School transportation site until September 6, 2019. Many families relocated specifically to those areas, as we all know, because there was a bus service. The lack of communication, sudden suspension of this stop was unsafe, inequitable, and unjust. Unsafe because on that day, September 3, children boarded the bus in the morning but were notified middle school day that they would not be able to take the bus home. Children were taken out of class to notify parents of the situation. The undersigned parents are all working parents and had to quickly attempt to resolve the transportation issue. Let's just say many of us had to rush home to resolve it. Many children had to walk home despite not knowing how to get home. This situation caused an unsafe situation for all children. When parents called Eastern Middle School to question the sudden communication, subsequent unsafe procedure, they informed parents to call the Greenwich Public School transportation number and filed a complaint. That was September 3. We have yet to hear a response, even though Eastern Middle School suggested they are very responsive. In Ecuador, many of the families effectively reside in Old Greenwich Gables, which is well-known as a commuterist community. Many families have two working parents. Many families are single-parent households because they're condominiums. Families chose to live in that area for the specific reason that they could place their children on the bus and go to work. And again, until September 6, Forest Avenue and Brownhouse Road was a bus stop for Eastern Middle School. Unjust. The Forest Avenue and Brownhouse Road bus stop is 1.4 miles away as the crows fly. Our children are not crows. They are people, and they walk. They don't fly. So Appendix A in the attachment shows you exactly the road and the walk path that is safe, that is more than 1.5 miles from the school. That being said, our book bags as weighed were 22 pounds. 1.5 miles, 22 pounds. My daughter arrived home today at 5:15. Subsequently, Appendix B also shows the steepness and the gradation and the elevation of those roads. If anyone in that area knows, past Finney Park, which is also a flood zone area, in certain times of year, that is not just dangerous, but treacherous. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item? All right, hearing them, thank you. We are going to move on to our next agenda item, which is monthly reports. We will start with the superintendent.
Thank you very much. I have about eight items just to report on tonight. First of all, we had a great start to the year, which I think you heard from our GEA and the wonderful convocation this year. I think we had a really positive start. Our enrollment, this is not our official number because that happens really on October 1, but we're running pretty much where we expected to be. Our middle school is right at 100% for the meeting of projection. High school at 99. Our K-5 is 98.3. So all of our buildings are running relatively full. Pre-K is over by about 26, but keep in mind, that's the projection from last year and when we did the budget, and pre-K has that rolling admissions all year long, so not necessarily unanticipated. We did get our bleachers opened after being repaired last Saturday for the first football game, made that game, made that, thanks to GAF for that donation of service, and I think we made it by about 48 hours, so it was pretty close. We also had an opportunity, I did, to attend the Hamilton Avenue PTA meeting last week and just to talk about their build. They're very excited that that project, the soil came back okay. We're now, moving forward, we have just a review, a draft review in their lobby so that as parents come and go, they can kind of see what the plan is. We also have several new faces. Shemaine Johnson was just announced our interim for our chief human resources officer today, so congratulations to her. And we did mention Sasha Houlihan earlier as our new director of communications, and thank you to whoever meant, I think our PTA mentioned our GPS, District Digest. We're going to continue, that'll get better and better all year long because part of it is figuring out what content needs to go in, what are the questions we're hearing from parents in our community, that we're going to use that to continually put out information. And you'll always have that facilities projects information at the bottom, which is one question I hear as I'm out and about, people want to know what's happening with the many, many projects that we have in the district. One item that was on the agenda tonight that we did pull off, and I want to make sure everybody understands why, especially given the public comment, we had the University of Connecticut Special Education Review on. We did not get the document from the professor that's leading on that review. I expect to have that, as soon as I get it, I'll send it to the board, but we'll have it on the next agenda for sure for you. Along with that review, we are also conducting with KEY2Ed another special education, I'm not going to call it a review, it's not really a review, they look at areas, programs, and services. And the main focus is to really look at those areas where there are conflicts or disputes in the district, and I think it's going to build on exactly what we heard tonight because it's based on stakeholder engagement. So they will be spending time, they're an outside agency, to help us figure out where some of those pressure points are in the district. And then the goal is, okay, what does that look like, solutions oriented? I think it's also going to help inform us during the budget to get information about what we're really hearing from our broader community. So do we want another study, and what should we be focused on in that study based on everything we learn? So I think that's going to be, it is KEY2Ed, K-E-Y-two, number-two-E-D. We also had our first two-day visits, and I just want to say thank you to the Board of Ed, members who were able to join us at all of the schools. That was a great start to the year. Last but not least, our parent score reports go home tomorrow night, and we did put a sample in our digest just so people could click on it. They look a little different this year because they're the growth reports. There's some scores parents aren't used to seeing, so I really encourage parents, before you look at your child, look at the sample, take the time to understand the report so that when you look at your own child's report, you'll understand it because it does look a little bit different. But of course, we will do everything we can to answer questions to help parents understand the data. And that's it. Thank you.
So I'll ask you questions since Peter's not here, and he usually asks questions during the superintendent time. I'm going to channel Peter's show tonight. So obviously, we heard a lot about special ed, you mentioned the UConn report, it's the first time, I guess, I've heard about this KEY2Ed. This is the second year running that we've put in our budget priorities a special education audit. So I, and I think it might have been discussed at the budget committee, I'm sorry Lauren, I didn't get to the chance to read the minutes, and you haven't had a report yet, so I'm going to steal your thunder, but I'd like to hear where we are in terms of our thinking on that. Does it, is it something we will need to wait for next year's budget for? Is it something we could try to actually get kicked off this year, especially since we keep hearing about this and the board is very interested, I think?
I think that UConn and the service that I just talked about are kicking it off. I think that's going to be a huge step in us being able to gather the information, listening to our community, looking at the programs, what we're offering. I mean, I can already tell you, because I've met with several parents that are here tonight that have come to see me, and things like, how long does it take to get through the intervention process before you actually get to testing? And I know that that's probably going to come up, but it would be better for that to come from an external source, after they've listened to stakeholders and teachers and our psychologists and really a broad group of people. We are building something in the budget so that next year, we will be able to do a further study, but I think this year's going to inform what that needs to look like because in special education, is it really about the finance aspect? Is it about services programs? And part of it is making sure we know what we're asking for in the scope of the work because we also don't want to pay $300,000 and then it really doesn't have any result or solution in the end. So we are building in some funds there. Whether or not it'll be too much, too little, we'll have to kind of look at that and figure that piece out.
Just staying on that, this all predates my time on the board, but my understanding is that we've done a lot of studies in the past, so if we could sort of somehow make sure that we do something extremely differently this time, because obviously this community is asking for that, and we haven't met their needs there.
I think the stakeholder input actually is one component that is different than what you do, and I've gone through several studies, you know, in the past, and I think the biggest fear you always have is, is it information that sits on the shelf and actually doesn't have any real impact? And so our goal is, it is to listen and learn and see if there are things that we can do better, more efficiently, because we hear that, you know, we're listening to what we heard tonight.
All right. Moving on, reports of officers, committees, and liaisons. Ms. T.
New committee formed over the summer, the Field Study Committee. As many people know, one of our other sort of pains in this town are fields, and so we have luckily formed a committee with the members of the Parks and Rec Administration, which is really nice, because I don't think it's ever occurred where we've had sort of this, the Board of Ed and the Parks and Rec Department working together. And the good news is that the BET actually allocated $75,000 for us to hire someone to develop a master plan for athletic fields throughout the town. Just so you know, we actually have over 60 fields in town. Of course, a lot of those are the fields that are standing right here at New Lebanon, but then there's also a lot of fields that are generally with the town. So it's nice for us to all sort of come together and see how we can best utilize those fields. The study is going to do three things. It's going to evaluate the existing conditions of our fields, we're going to analyze the field usage, and then we're going to recommend field improvements. Obviously, quite like the KG&amp;D study, this is going to be over many years. The good news is that we actually have received five proposals as of the deadline, which closed yesterday, and over the next few weeks, the committee's going to come back together, pick who we're going to go with, and then I will hopefully update you with an extreme.
Thank you. Dr. Francis?
So strategic plan committee, we sent out the minutes from that, which sort of outlined the proposal for the timeline. I thought we might get to that at the last meeting, so I just want to make sure we get an agreement on that timeline, so I'm not sure what we want to do about that, but I would think that, I don't know how we want to do that. I was going to say email responses, but maybe that's too close to a meeting, but maybe at our next, we should just talk about it.
All right, we can talk about it, or maybe we should have a strategic point discussion at our retreat.
Right, so maybe we'll figure it out for one of our meetings that's upcoming. Policy we'll work on tonight, and we will continue to kind of get through our K policies. Alliance, we have the wonderful report from tonight. I had the pleasure of attending those meetings and being part of that, and it's a great addition for our schools. It's really an amazing thing that we have in our town that's so supportive of our educators and our students, so I just want to give a little cheer for that and recommend people take a look through that written report because it really is an amazing addition for our schools and support for our schools. And the curriculum committee, Curriculum Council, I do want to bring up that we had started a discussion last spring in terms of screen time. We had talked about, you know, really trying to understand well what the various concerns parents have, and then try to figure out how we're going to collect information, I think, and to be sure that we've considered all of the concerns so that the information we collect will be useful. So I'd love to hear at some point kind of what the plan is from the administrative side in terms of addressing that. And actually, our last meeting, we were talking about communication of curriculum out to parents, so I think these are some really big topics that are being brought up in Curriculum Council, and I think it's just making sure that those things continue to move forward.
Thank you. All right, Ms. T, I know you have negotiations later, so nothing, Ms. Raven.
So since our last, since our last business meeting, we had two budget meeting, and I realized we didn't share the minutes with the rest of the board, so we'll just figure out where they get posted. Thank you, Michael. So the first meeting was back in August 30, and we just talked a little bit about the need to improve our communications with other stakeholders, especially around the 15-year master facility plan and our capital requests and how they connect on an annual basis. There was a lot of miscommunication and confusion when we went through the budget cycle with the RTM this past spring. We also talked about capital plan additions that we'll be seeing when we see the capital budget. For example, the connector that burst at the PAF, we're going to proactively replace the other ones so that they don't burst, so some of those types of things. And then we talked about the program review, which was presented to us at our September 5 meeting. And then the most recent meeting, September 12, Dr. Jones presented some of her ideas for budget transfers, and those were in the minutes, so we did talk about the special ed report that between UConn and now, I guess, KEY2Ed, is that what you called it? That will be better informed on what to do in a more full-blown report. We talked about some changes to translation services, some maybe real-time verbal type translation services, the $27,000 for the Avid program, I'm kind of looking at my notes, the possibility of additional preschool sections, and you just alluded to that, Dr. Jones, in your report with the enrollment. Winrose, a full-time program administrator, so those are some examples, and feel free to read the minutes and ask any of the committee members questions. The other committee that we had a meeting on was food services. We don't have minutes yet to share. And then Ann and I will be asking for an agenda item to be added just to update the board on food services. There were a lot of things we closed in our requested last May, one of them being the financials for the different pilots that we were considering, no plans for gate, improving ourselves, food service management company, and we do have some of the analysis that was developed. And then we also have the outcome of using the trays and the dishwashers at New Lebanon, and the feedback that was received in summer school for the paper boats and the beginning of school year for the paper boats, but found another, and Lori could probably speak, or maybe Ann, sorry Lori, I'm looking at you because you were food services. Ann will speak perhaps to it, a safer molded compostable, not disposable, compostable tray that we could be using. And then we do have some pricing to still try to include dishwashers and trays into the fiscal year 2021 budget. And I think some people know that a financial audit had been started by the financial department in town in the BET, and then the internal auditor is no longer with the town of Greenwich. That audit will still take place, it was started, it had actually been slated to start, or had been on their list to do, I guess, for a couple of years, so they'll continue to do that. And my only, I think a little, I don't want to be negative, disappointed to read today's article in the Greenwich Times on the front page, a lot of quotes from John Hopkins, one of them being that the board had requested budget cuts in food services, and I know that we've been signaling like that we want to know what the costs are to serve healthier food to our students so that we can make a decision, but I don't think anybody signaled to the administration that we were looking to cut food services budget. It wasn't written by somebody at the Greenwich Times, I think it was Connecticut Mirror and maybe republished in Greenwich Times, but it was on the front page. Take a read.
Thank you. New Lebanon, you kind of got an update from Mr. Kantoursky that the playgrounds are coming in, grass will be there, I can't wait to see a field in its place because it's been way too long, but we are still under budget and the school's open on time, so if you haven't been in the building, come see the full building. It really is a sight to be seen. All right, with that, we're going to move on to discussion items. So the first.
I have a quick, I just want to put a date out there for the Greenwich Public School holiday. A great tradition, celebrating senior teachers, who the D Act of the Senior Teachers Awards Committee will be meeting, which is going to bring forth the kickoff of the year, and the important date to keep in mind is March 12 will be the deadline for nominating this year. So keep that in mind and start thinking for the public out there, if you're going to start nominating, it's going to matter, and the deadline date. I also just wanted to see if I could circle back, I didn't ask a question, I want to briefly about terms of what Dr. Jones had the special education review, and did you hear something about stakeholders, which is very important? I just wanted to be sure that the parent feedback would be involved in their daily support, because I feel like for too long, we've had the administrators in charge of the many ways of failing programs, so I think it's for the deadline, parent experience, part of the audit or review, whichever direction we go, so I wanted to kind of turn that as well.
Great.
Yes, when you say stakeholder, it does include parents, it includes staff, it's broad stakeholder input.
All right, anything else? All right, with that, we move on to discussion items. Today, it's a technology program report. Dr. Jones, I want to see Mr. Ting, so I'll let you.
I believe this is, I think he's in Singapore tonight, one of family. I'm going to try to answer as many questions as I can for you, though I will start just on the very, it's almost on the back page, just that options for parent control because that was a topic tonight. So we do have the software, it's in implementation mode right now. As you can imagine, when it's attached to all the devices, individual students, just setting that up takes some time. I would expect by the end of this first semester, we hope that that would be ready to launch. Again, we do have the software that's being implemented, which will, I think, give the parents what they've been asking for in terms. And also for us, as an ed, from the educator standpoint, you know, we'll be able to look across the district and see, what does kindergarten look like when you're talking about kids being logged in and screen time? So we're moving in that direction. If there are any questions in specific, I know this is information only, do you want me to go through this whole report, or?
There probably is some discussion, Ms. Raven.
I think it's on page seven and eight, we have fewer, so you might never really answer this, we have fewer support tickets year over year, and also satisfaction has gone up, but I don't know if the fewer support tickets closed meant that they were still open, or is everything open-closed? So just any sort of insight as to, it seems less and we're getting better, which is a good thing.
Yes, when it's closed, that means it's resolved, so that's good. It means we're able to resolve more issues and faster.
You want to add, Dr. Francis?
This is nitty-gritty, but it was sort of interesting to me that it seemed like this, where I wrote it down, but the software tickets went away, and so my only concern was, did that get recategorized into another thing, or was that part of the reason the number went down, or are we not taking care of that, or why did that particular seem to just completely disappear?
So we went with a different, it's still a ticketing system, but most people don't recognize it as a ticketing system. The old systems, it really was kind of cumbersome in the way the tickets worked. Now, from the user standpoint, it looks like an email, you email it, but it grabs the email and creates the ticket automatically.
I got that, I'm sorry, my question wasn't clear. The, if you look, and I think there's five categories, I was actually looking at it because I thought it might have been nice to present the information a little differently because there were so many charts, it would have been nice to condense it, and I happened to notice that one of the colors was gone, and it's gone because the software support tickets, which was one of the categories, so those Chromebooks went up and things went down, and one of the categories just completely disappeared. And so I wondered, that got classified into another, taken care of some other way, and that was, you know, 7% of all the tickets. Well, if you classify that elsewhere, then not surprising that the number of tickets would go down, and so it just made me wonder a little bit about the data and what that was and why it wasn't in there anymore.
I'll find out, please.
Yep, Jennifer.
I want to congratulate you, Lori, and your staff, because we don't hear enough positive things that we should hear, and we should get the positive news out to the community. We had a network availability rating of 99.99%, which is an hour of downtime for the entire year, and I think that's absolutely stellar, and it's a huge improvement. So would you please thank Michael for us?
Ms. Stowe.
To continue with the joy there, Jennifer, I was going to sort of take a step back and say, this was a very well-written report, and you, having spent some of my career in technology, were often not commended for writing well, and so I was very impressed that he could both do technology and write a great report, although he did credit you, Ann, for some help at the end, so it's in plain English, it's understandable, and I appreciate that. The big things I took away from it is that we're doing really well, we have, we're supporting over 10,000 devices, that's pretty amazing, but it's only going to get harder, and cybersecurity, obviously, will continue to be a focus, and love to hear more about that when maybe Michael's back around. The other thing is the phone system was hidden in here, and I know we talked about that last year, and it fell out of our capital expenditures, but it's kind of embarrassing, our phone system, and I hope that's something that we think about as we look at our capital plan this year, if that's possible. And lastly, sort of to continue from the speakers tonight, I don't know if this is the place where, but Tony, you sort of picked up on that theme, is, as I've heard from many parents, as a parent of elementary school children, it is very frustrating to not know how much screen time your child has been spending during the day, and I have a second grader and a fourth grader. The middle school kid, it makes sense to me, honestly, but the pendulum perhaps has swung too far, and I think that parents are right to at least say, let's find out just how much time we are spending on the device, and then we can make good decisions, but we need more data, so I'm happy to hear that.
Ms. O'Neil.
I also think it's a very well-written report, but I did have a question about, at one time, the media center personnel and the IT people worked as a team, and now they are, I understand, two separate groups answering to two different coordinators, and I'm just wondering if all the wriggles have been addressed in that breakup of that system since they both occupy the same workspace, and is there a clear delineation of what each of them are doing, and how is that working out? The other thing, in past reports, they've talked about the loss of, loss and damage of devices, and I know when this originally was put out, there was a large amount of money put aside for lost and damaged devices, and there seemed to be no penalty, they seemed to think children would learn from experience or whatever, and I just wondered what that, what are we, what's it costing us in lost and damaged devices, and are we making any attempt to collect any of that from students? And then the third thing is that although it's an extremely well-written report, the goals are not smart goals, so even though he talks about options to parent controls, there's no timeline on when that's going to happen, or what the, how would we judge success when this report comes to us next year? So again, and I'm assuming those goals are his new initiatives, it didn't talk either about whether he anticipated any new staffing or any staff changes, or if any of his initiatives were going to cost any additional money.
Okay, so I want to finish off that and just pull some of my thunder. Let's start with the positive. When we started this, this was like going to be $30 million, the town was making a huge investment, it's going to take us forever. It didn't take forever, we got devices in the hands of kids, but the measure of success, I said it before I got on the board, I've been saying it for every one of them, oh my God, I sound like Peter, everyone in the six years I've been here, but basically, the measure of success for this could not have been getting devices in the hands of kids. And I guess for me, the disconnect is, and I understand it's a separate area from Michael's department, but it's the, what is the use case for these devices, and that's what we have never established. So when Barbara talks about the measure of success, that's really what we want to see, or at least what I want to see, I can't speak for everybody else, but it's project-based learning, group learning, right, making videos, and having kids teaching lessons and taking videos, I've been doing that. One of our student government leaders talked about public speaking, one of the best ways to improve as a public speaker, and it is one of the worst things you ever have to do, is watch yourself, and the only way that can happen is with a device. So there's a lot of different things that we could start measuring, other than just, how much time is the device on? It's not a great measure, I use it with my own kids, I got to tell you something, it doesn't really tell a whole story. So if we could figure that out, somehow tie that in, because this report in a vacuum is all about the assets, not about the use of the assets, and I, we see pieces and bits of it elsewhere in other reports, but it's really got to come together for us. All right, Ms. Olson, did you want an opportunity?
I do, I do, I, yeah, I mean, from hearing earlier, and just from, you know, my own experience, a lot of people were saying, you know, I'm not an educator, but, well, I am an educator, and I also really, I cannot justify, you know, we had heard some really poignant questions earlier, and I cannot justify putting devices into the hands of a bunch of kid-maternal, sitting around in a circle with, you know, headsets on and devices, so the, I mean, I fully agree that not only do we need to know how much time is thrown on the devices, but we need to revisit the measure of success, especially at the elementary school ages. The more schools I work in, the more people I hear from say, your elementary, your kindergarten are students aren't playing devices, it's not, I'm not saying there's not a place, but at that age, I just, I can't, I don't, I don't, I need more, I need to understand more of what we're doing when we're so young.
Ms. Riden.
I wanted to echo Kathleen's statement, I too noticed the phone system, and I said, didn't we look at that last year and take it out, so if we can consider the impact of putting it into fiscal year 2021?
High school, the high school is in, I think it's the rest of the district that is the follow-up.
Cool. I've been reading a lot about digital devices, and what I've heard, and it must be a combination of school and home, is the new digital divide is the kids spending too much time on the screen. So it used to be the kids that didn't have the device, now the digital divide is the child that spends too much time on the screen. So I think, I heard the parents' feedback, and I hear my fellow board members' questions, it's something that we should be, you know, looking into, and, you know, not technology for technology's sake.
Ms. Stowe.
I'm going to disagree with my board colleagues on this, and I know we have some newer members of the board, but certainly the older members of the board should remember, we did have measures of success that had to do with teachers changing their practice, we had definite categories, their ability to give feedback to the students, and for the students to give feedback to the teachers, differentiation between learners, self-regulation, there were two others, it's been a while since I saw the report, but we did get data on the change of teacher practice. We also built it into the teacher evaluation system, so that digital learning is now how teachers are evaluated for proper use of technology. And I think that to walk away from this discussion as a parent without that information is not exactly painting an accurate picture.
Ms. O'Neil.
So I think some of our comments shouldn't be directed to Mr. Tang at all, because his, because the way these departments were now divided, which is my first comment, these are comments that should be developed, addressed to media services and curriculum. Mr. Tang's report has to do with devices and repair and security and stuff that has not to do directly with instruction, this particular report.
Dr. Francis.
So it's funny, because I was, when I first put my hand up, it was to sort of say what others were saying in terms of concern and wanting to hear, but after I heard everybody kind of come up with concerns, I'm sort of finding myself on the other side of the argument, which is, you know, I think there is no doubt in my mind that used appropriately digital tools can be unbelievably beneficial. I think what's critical is the appropriate use, the appropriate amount of time, it's really targeting it for those students who are going to maximize the benefit that they get from that. I think in terms of being able to tailor education and help kids who may not be sort of the middle of the road within a classroom, who really need something outside of that or beyond that, I think used appropriately can be amazing tools, and, you know, it's finding that balance. What I did put in here in my notes, you know, in prep for this, was sort of the question of, you know, when I looked at technology report on the agenda, I wasn't sure what was coming, and what I did is a quick screen through to see, I don't see where we're going to get that sort of daily follow-up, and I feel like, there's this feeling like, okay, now all the devices are out there, so that daily initiative is kind of done, but I do feel like we really need a follow-up, because a lot of the data we had gotten initially was, you know, our early adopters, and here are the waves, and this is what's happening, but I feel like we really need to clearly understand, you know, how well are these devices being used, how much is that impacting personalized learning, how are we evaluating that, I think, beyond sort of the principal, unless they're looking at it in a teacher's classroom and saying, okay, up there, it seemed to be doing a good job of using it, I think it is our responsibility to continue to evaluate that and to make sure that we feel that that's being done in the appropriate way.
Anything else on this? Please thank Mr. Tang.
And I was just going to say, but I do think it's amazing how well we are using the technology as far as the technology report goes.
All right, thank you, moving on, the next item is tuition and fees. Ms. O'Donnell.
The report that you have in front of you presents the proposed tuition and fees for fiscal year 21, starting next July. The tuition and fees cover three categories, it's the K-12 program, which is a program available to employees of the Greenwich Public School System and the town of Greenwich employees, it's the preschool programs, and it's our secondary summer programs. So on the second page, you have the proposed rates, and we also show you this year's rates for comparative purposes, the rates that we're proposing do align with what we, what I mentioned last year, which was the goal of trying to get our rates more, well, the K-12 rates more in line with the per-people spending, and so this is the second year of the 10% raise that we're showing here. In addition, we have the preschool programs, which are reflecting a 3% increase to align with what we expect some of our competitors to be offering, so more based on market. And then we have the secondary summer programs as well, which have rates that vary from 3% to 5%. Happy to take any questions.
Lori, can you remind me on a trend, do we increase at a certain percent every time you look at the document? Is it a steady trend, or does it vary a lot in terms of what you present to us for tuition increases, year to year?
In terms of historical trends?
Yeah.
Right, so I actually went back about 10 years, I did this last year, and I looked back again this year. There was a point in time, just about 10 years ago, where you had two years of 10% increases, I would suspect probably to align with per-people spending back then, but then after that, the increases didn't keep up with that trend, so your increases were lower, between 0 and 2%. So we found ourselves, you know, at a point where the rate that we were currently offering was not aligned with per-people spending anymore, and so that was the reason last year I proposed trying to do that over the next three years, we didn't want to do it all in one year, so this would be year two of that.
So Lori, just to ask, because I think we've done it years past, benchmarking against other districts of the pre-K programs, do you remember where we sit in relation to that?
In terms of pre-K programs, I'll ask Ms. Ford to respond.
I'm sorry, Peter, we don't usually look at other of the districts, we've looked at the private preschools in town and benchmarked against them. Again, programs differ widely in terms of hours, so we usually look at their percent increases as kind of the benchmark for a year ago.
Any other questions on this? All right, so.
Just the one comment, which is, I'm happy to see, because I think we talked about it a couple of years ago, that we've given a free and reduced rate for all of our programs, I think so many of them are engaging and will get our kids more involved in the basic subjects, very interesting topics. I don't know that it matters to me too much, but I see that the rate varies for the full fee, but that it's completely flat for the free and reduced, and I don't know if there was thought about that, but you can have, the full fee might be twice as much for one class as another, and it's still set at the same number for the free and reduced. I don't know if anybody else cares.
It reflects a 5% increase, but because the base is so small, you're not seeing that much of an increase overall.
I'm not doing a good job of asking my questions tonight, I'm sorry. If you look at the class fee, for example, the engineering course might be $108, but the geometry course is $857, but for the free and reduced lunch, it's 44 for each of them. And so you think it should just be the same across, and whether it's elective or not elective or things?
The difference in the cost is the number of days that the course is held, so a two-day course is at a less fee, and then the course is.
I think the sense I'm getting from my neighbor is that the way it is is good, so we can leave it, but I was just saying, it's $44 for every single free and reduced lunch class, even though it varies dramatically for the regular fee, and so I just was wondering if there had been consideration, or whether anybody would think that we would want to vary it or not.
All right, anything else on this? Ms. Stowe.
Real fast, I think that it's probably a good thing that we seem to be having more students this year, 139 certified, so I guess people are using this benefit, which is nice to hear, but could you just tell me real fast why the summer school revenues are continuing to decline?
Well, this year, we did not have as many students attend, and last year, we had more free and reduced lunch students attending.
Ms. O'Neil.
Did we have fewer students this year because the criteria changed? No, it's only because we had only one elementary site that we could use because of building and capital projects across the district. We were capped, correct. Yeah, the cost would have gone down, we did have less sites, less staff.
Is that accurate?
You'll get that information when the summer school report comes, I think in two months or three months, I'm not sure, I think in December.
Any other questions on this? All right, so we will take this up at our next meeting as an action item. The next item is the FY 2021 budget resolution, part of our 12-month budget process here in the lovely town of Greenwich.
Yeah, so the FY 2021 budget resolution is, I guess, drafted at this time to have an opportunity for the Board of Ed to make any modifications to it. I sort of see it as the exceptions to the process, so it allows the Board of Ed to accept certain gifts, grants, et cetera, without having to go through the RTM, and so many of these do require us still going to the BET. However, I guess over the past couple of years, we've had some, you know, wonderful additions, we've made some modifications, and so this year, I'm not proposing any changes.
So I have one question, are we, I know we changed the language in this year's budget resolution that is coming, this budget that's in place now, for insurance proceeds, are we comfortable that the language that's in here going forward will accomplish what it was supposed to, which is the proceeds are supposed to come back to the Board of Education?
For Medicaid, is this the Medicaid, yeah. There's language in there that allows it to come back to the Board of Ed, ideally, perhaps we would have wanted it stated a little differently, but we, provided we provide a report of how we're spending the funds above and beyond our budget, we're able to have those funds deposited back to the Board of Ed budget to cover them.
So that is actually working?
It hasn't happened yet, because we need cash receipts in the year, in this fiscal year, and then once those cash receipts are here, we can then make claim against them, and we'll show them how we've spent more than the cash they have available to give us.
Okay, so if it doesn't go as anticipated, we expect to hear back from you?
Sure, of course.
Good, thank you. Anything else on this? Ms. O'Neil?
On number 44, it says, the board is authorized to accept proceeds from the following sources. What is the process for that? So it says, school lunch, building rental, print shop, so it's, and then it gets sent to the controller and so on, so what is the process for the board?
for the Board accepting those funds?
That's a great question.
Okay, I'll move on, you can get back to me. Mainly, I have the same question over and over again about process. H, the administration says, "Submit to the Board an annual report first out of night." Oh, it's Medicaid, blah, blah, blah. So most of these say that they will go on to the controller, and the BET, and the whatever. But my question is, even for donations and whatever, and grants, have to be accepted by the Board. And I'd like to know what this process is. And so if you could get back to us, because nothing, this is sort of another of my many mantras, legacy, I'll leave with you. Nothing should go out from the Board of Ed before the Board of Ed sees it. You're very good. You're actually, we've seen more stuff from you than we've seen in years. But nothing should go to the BET for requests for anything. Information shouldn't go to them until the Board has seen it, and in some places have to authorize it. So I just want to make that clear, so maybe some of the language needs to be cleared up here.
Dr. Francis.
So I know we tried this before. I was at the RTM meeting recently for a different reason, and I heard that they were proposing, or someone had proposed, that they might go up to $25,000 as a different number. I wasn't paying enough attention to know if that was really, you know, referring to something that we had been wanting to do as well. But I assume we'll keep our ears open. If there's a change in that, then we would change that number back up again. I know we had tried, failed, but hopefully if the RTM does it, then we can change that in our stuff as well, it'd be great.
Technically, it has to start with the BET, sadly. But, all right, anybody else? Nope. All right, moving on, thank you very much. The next item is policy first read. Dr. Francis.
I got comments from speakers, but anybody else have comments on the first reads?
All right, Ms. Dayton.
Okay, so since there's no page numbers, I'm going to go with the policy number 3520.1, and it's called "Information Security Breach and Notification." I was wondering, since there is a new collaboration between the Town IT Department and the Board of Ed IT Department to deal with cybersecurity and security breaches, if this policy has been reviewed by that task force to make sure it's completely up to date with what our current practices for Greenwich as a whole?
I did not have it go to the group, but I did have it go to Michael Tink. So, yeah, and actually, he and Bob Hibson both reviewed these in relation to their different roles.
Ms. Raven.
Policy 3541, transportation. What happened to the mention of, you know, what qualified somebody to get a bus? And then also our issue that we had with Eagle Hill, and how we would incorporate notification, like, it seemed like some of that didn't...
So I would now like to apologize. This is our first round for this year, and I should have really flagged this one, I think, for more attention, because we had spoken about it before. And this is obviously where we came to as PGC. But in terms of the private school portion, we kept it with state statute and came up with some timeline for that. But this obviously is something that people really should pay attention to. And if we need to put this in one more round of discussion, I'm sorry for not having made sure everybody was really reading that carefully.
So I think the other part that Lauren was asking about, though, is where's the mileage limitations for when we provide transportation? I think that's set in the old policies. Is it in a different policy now?
So I think, right, the state didn't have it the way we had it. And there are some things that we, I'm sorry, I did what was done to me, I didn't quite listen to the question, I guess. But the, I was feeling guilty and was distracted by that. We could certainly add in what our standard is, but that also could go into regulation. So it really depends on if the Board wants that specificity within the policy. But I don't think it's written elsewhere. It would be in this policy or in regulation attached to this policy, and you can do that either way.
And I think it was in previous policy. Look, as somebody that's just outside of the limit for the high school bus and doesn't get one and drives every morning, sure, I'd love somebody to come along and change it, but I think that's something the Board needs to decide, because it's got a huge impact.
Yes. And we are getting a lot of feedback. So I don't want to put it on a very, very, very long list of things to do, but what would it take? You know, things are different. Walking to school is different than when I went to Greenwich High School. Like, walking two miles didn't seem so hard. But things are different. There are so many bad drivers on our Greenwich roads. It's unbelievable. So I'm not advocating to change it, but I'm advocating to look at possibilities of decreasing the distance. I don't think that's a policy. It's not a policy, it's just general, you know, thought process.
Ms. Dayton.
I'm sorry, but before we leave that, is this comment on that point? And is there direction from the Board in terms of what we should do with this policy with regards to stating the distances?
I think it's a discussion. You can have it at PGC, but I think it belongs in the policy. Because if it's not there, basically it's left to the administration, and as a procedure, it would not come to us. So if we want to say this is our opportunity. Ms. Dayton.
That was exactly what I was trying to say before, I didn't get a chance to say it, that we need to spell it out in the policy to avoid any situation like Eagle Hill ever happening again. Everything that we can specify, especially if it's been in a prior policy, I think we should spell it out.
Guys, have one thing? We just need to, if the Board is giving us any direction on not just copying and pasting what we currently have, we need to do some sort of sensitivity analysis, because that could obviously change our financial trust of it, which scares me. So, I mean, I don't know if the direction is, or are we just basically copying and pasting what we currently have?
You got to start with the copy and paste, given we're in the middle of the transition of our policies. I think that's something that can be flagged in for future discussion. I'd certainly throw in the flag, so. Anybody else on this? Ms. Olson.
Yeah, in terms of, in terms of what happened with Eagle Hill, et cetera, is that something that we could put in the policy in terms of providing parents, that I think we said we're going to provide a certain amount of advance notice if there was going to be, you know, a change in the route? That's something that we're saying we could. That was also something, I think that, if I remember correctly, from that special meeting back over the summer, that Dr. Francis had said that was also in the, that was also in the statute. That wasn't just in the policy, because that was also in the, give me the word, Dr. Francis. The guidelines, the street mandate that they had to know by a certain amount of time? And if this wasn't in Florida, I'm trying to give us something you could put in here.
Yeah, so Megan, it is actually in there, there's a paragraph towards the end of that policy that reads, they have to submit the report they give to the state about their enrollment, and then there's a second date if they want us to actually route the buses. So there's two checkpoints for them to meet in order to get the transportation. Did I get that right, Dr. Francis? Okay. Ms. Raven.
Maybe I didn't read it, but there was no, when would we notify them that, them? It was what they tell us, but there was no information about...
Our decision.
Right. When do we tell them our decision?
I think the gist of what this is saying is that if you're at 50%, you get it. If you're under 50%, you don't. And if you want it, you need to get your information in time. There's not really much to say if you abide by the cutoff. We can add in some date, but we are required by law to give transportation if your population is 50% Connecticut or more.
Right, but what happened is it fell below, and we...
It was always below, it did fall below, it was always below.
Well, whatever, they were notified that late in the process. So maybe it's, whatever the dialogue is booked between the private school and us with that report, if it's a form that they fill out, like, oh, by the way, under 50, you know.
So what this policy is stating is that if you're under 50%, you're not going to get it.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Dayton.
So I agree, you're absolutely right, and that makes total sense for a policy. However, private schools, the way they have chosen to notify their parents is abysmal. I mean, the timing they chose, how they chose to do it, we don't have influence over how they do that. But we have influence over documenting when we told the private schools that they were not getting transportation. And then, if something like Eagle Hill happens again, it is totally on them. And I think that this Board should do that to prevent future...
So you guys want a sentence that's added in that says, "If you're under 50%, we will notify you within X amount of time that you're not going to get transportation?" Or if you don't meet criteria or something?
Well, maybe phrase it in the way that if a private school requests transportation, and as of whatever date they're under, that we will notify them that they're not going to be eligible in the policy.
I guess nobody should put the burden on us. I mean, we're basically telling you, you have, they have the state report that they compile, and then they have to provide it to the superintendent by no longer refers to be considered for student transportation for the following year. If they don't submit it, they're out. If they submit it, it's below 50%, they're out. If they submit it above 50%, it's a go.
Right, but our issue was, they were below 50%, but we never, we waited maybe too long in their eyes, maybe not so much in our eyes. And the fix for that is, if they're below, they submit, they're below, we tell them right away, you're not eligible.
It's putting an extra job on us.
We're going to be notifying them anyway, so they're...
Is there another, I haven't decided if I think this is a good idea, but it's an idea that just came to my head, which is, do we send out notification to all the schools that we have given transportation to, saying, "This policy has been adopted, we will give it for 50% and over, and here are the criteria you need to fill to get that?" And we do that once now, as part of this new policy, and then we're done.
I think we need to do that anyway, because we're putting it in our policy, but how would they know about it otherwise? Ms. Olson, did you want to say anything?
But do we just make that decision, and then there's no new requirement to do it on a yearly basis, or at some later time?
Ms. Olson, did you want to say something?
Yes, no, I just think, I think that the more explicit we can be in terms of, not to kind of own it on, I understand, like, you know, it's a typical job to let their parents know that they're, I think that the more explicit we can be, at least this time around, like, you know, saying, this is, the more openly we have the communication, the more explicit we can be from the get-go, then I think we'll save ourselves sort of that hot water if we find ourselves and say, oh my gosh, we didn't even realize that this was, you know, I mean, everybody's still caught by surprise when we found out late. So, yes, I'm disagreeing. I think it might be a good idea to just kind of send this out, because at least they, you know, it's out there, it's in writing, and everybody's on a new page.
So I think that seems to be like, not something that really goes into the policy in an ongoing basis, but something that we might ask our superintendent to direct her cabinet members to do?
As a procedure?
Yes, I've actually already met with Eagle Hill personally, after we had our meeting, just to tell them this is probably the direction we're going in, and it would behoove them to enroll the additional, you know, six or seven students for next year.
All right, anything else on the policies? All right, so we will take these up as an action item at our next meeting. Okay, we are now on to our action items, and it's the one we've all been waiting for, the GEA Collective Bargaining Agreement for 2020 to 2023. Ms. Dayton.
I'd like to express heartfelt appreciation to the Greenwich Education Association and Carol Sutton and her entire negotiating team for a summer filled with meetings, many hours, that we work through our differences. And I'm very proud of this agreement, and I'm also very proud that we reached it through problem-solving and collaboration, and not through an outside arbitration panel. So I couldn't be happier, and I urge my fellow Board members to ratify this agreement, so it can go to the RTM and be voted.
Make a motion.
I make a motion to ratify the Greenwich Education Association agreement for a successor contract for 2020 to 2023.
Ms. Raven, would you like a second? Ms. Raven, seconds, it's a long summer. All right, discussion. I don't know if you want to give a little bit of highlight on this, Ms. Dayton?
I'm planning to give highlights, but all Board members received an extensive packet at an executive session. In front of you is the actual, long, full contract, with the changes redlined, and a total cost of contract spreadsheet. So I think everyone has been well educated on this, and I just would like to have a vote.
Any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of accepting the GEA Bargaining Agreement for 2020 to 2023? Ms. Olson?
Aye. Yes, aye.
All right, that passes 7-0, thank you very much. Those documents, now that the GEA has ratified, and now that we've ratified, will be posted to our website. Thank you for that. All right, next item is the policy action. Dr. Francis.
Policy, oh, so I move for the Board to accept the new policy 3514.
Your second?
I'll second.
Ms. To. Discussion, Dr. Francis. Do you want to explain? No, no discussion. All right, any questions, comments, discussion on this? All right, all those in favor of accepting the policy as presented? Ms. Olson?
Aye.
All right, that passes 7-0, thank you. All right, next up, field trip approval for the GHS Boys Swim Team. I will move that, since it's from Dr. Jones. I move to approve the GHS Boys Swim Field Trip to Aruba in February of 2020, and I think we should all join them. That part's not a motion, is there a second? Second from Ms. To. Discussion, Dr. Jones.
This is the 47th annual trip for the GHS Boys Swim Team, and this will be their third time to travel to Aruba. We did approve the last two. And they do meet the $5 million insurance that's required by the Town of Greenwich. So we're hoping that you will let them go to Aruba.
Any discussion? All those in favor of Aruba? All right, that passes 7-0, we're going to Aruba. All right, next up, the assessment report scheduled for 2019-2020. This is an action item, although it's been amended since our last meeting. So maybe we'll take some discussion before we take a motion on that one, if that's all right with everybody. Yeah, the assessment report schedule. So Dr. Carabillo, if you want to tell us a little bit about what's going on here?
In looking back to the prior assessment report that you had received in 2015, I did the same thing. I made sure that the dates were updated, that you had the information. There are some changes that occurred from the past number of years, five years. We now have for eighth graders and ninth graders, the PSAT. So that is a new assessment that students take. The eighth grade is for those students who are avid students, and ninth grade is for all of the students. Also, let me see, where's the other big difference? Also, let me see, where's the other big difference? Last Links no longer has the DRA, or students that are in elementary school no longer have the DRA for EL assignments. So we have other tests that we use. We use the Language Skills Bridge Assessment and the Language Skills Transition Assessment. So that has been taken off the students' plates. We also now do SBA and NGSS. So these dates are up to date, and the tests are up to date. And if we are chosen by NAEP, which we should be hearing soon, then that will also be occurring in between January and March of next year.
All right, discussion on this item. Ms. Dayton?
If it's the last thing I do before I leave the board, it's going to take an assessment or two off of fifth grade. I've been saying this for maybe 25 years. I'm not sure. There's no reason in my mind that the 21st Century Skills Assessment needs to be added to the heavy burden of fifth graders. It can be done in sixth grade. There's no problem there. Also, I'm not sure why we have words their way as an assessment in fifth grade. That seems great for the lower-grade levels in elementary school. I'm just looking for a way to take one or two of these assessments off the backs of our overburdened fifth graders who have all kinds of transition tests to go through to get to middle school.
So, Ms. O'Neill?
I will take a look at that. Could you please speak to the fact that the avid kids are going to take the PSAT?
Students who are in the avid elective class always take the PSAT in eighth grade. That is something that we do with avid students.
And why do we do that?
It is something that the avid program for elective students recommends that we do, so that it's a way for students to get ready, because it is a college prep program.
Well, it seems to me that more than the avid kids would benefit from taking the PSAT in eighth grade.
They would, but we pay for the PSATs for the avid students.
So, well, that's not a good reason for that to...
I'm just saying that that's what the rationale is for the avid elective students, but I can look, I will have a conversation with Mrs. Nadell and see if there is something else that we can do for the eighth-grade students.
All right, Dr. Francis?
I have the same question, but then it sort of occurred to me that it's not, the National Merit Scholarship part of it, which is sort of when it quote-unquote counts, is in 11th grade, right?
That is marked. It is in grades 10 and 11.
But 11 is when they get chosen for the National Merit Scholarship, so 9 and 10 is also practice.
Correct.
So they do have two years of practice before they take the 11th grade, so I'm not sure I feel that strongly about it.
Ms. O'Neill?
I'm not so sure. You know, I feel that that's a great thing just for the avid kids. I think if you think it's that good, because I think, Dr. Francis, this made a good point about practice. I just think that all the students should have that opportunity, the PSAT, the practice. We had 14 National Merit Scholars this year, but when you look at the private schools, one of the private schools, which is much smaller than us, had nine. So it seems to me that maybe we ought to be grooming more kids for that test. And I'm not sure it should be limited to avid kids at all.
I guess I'll add my two cents to Ms. Dayton's point. I think we already have too many tests. And so I get the idea of having the avid kids take it, give them the opportunity to take more tests like that to get comfortable. Maybe there's a way to do it without the high-stakes testing. Ms. Stowe?
Yeah, I'm kind of where you are, Peter. And so I have a few questions, just point of clarification, and then I actually think there's another test that is taken in the fifth grade that somehow is not on here, and that's the COGAT. At least, I know that my fifth grader took it last year. I don't know if that's just for ALP. Okay, but that should be on here, because I know that we have some things here for ALP, like the performance task. So I go down here for the Grade 2 Above Level Iowa Performance Test, and unless I'm mistaken, we haven't used the Iowa Performance Test for like four or five years for ALP. I think we're just using the CML now, and I think the Language Arts Department writes their own, but maybe I'm mistaken.
I will double-check with Bonnie.
Okay, I'm pretty sure I'm mistaken. And then, the STAR assessments. Interestingly, it says, so we use it all the way through 12th grade. I was a little confused by that.
For some students, yes.
And then it says it's untimed, which I know it is, but the question's timed out. And so I just thought that was an interesting point of clarification, because I've driven kids in the cars that said, "Oh, it's at the start of A, but I got this question timed out." So I just think that's something that we should note, because that certainly stresses some children out, and I do therefore think it's a timed test. But in general, this is a lot. And I would love to see how, we talk about mindfulness and all this other stuff, and this sort of increases the stress level for all these children, so I'd like to see how we could fix that. Like I said earlier, testing for testing's sake doesn't make sense, and I'd like to see how this is actually helping us.
Ms. O'Neill?
I think it's not the amount of testing, it's how the testing is used. And, you know, good diagnostic testing was taken out of the ALP identification under pretext of it being too much testing, but we didn't do anything to anybody else's testing. But anyway, I think it's a matter of what we do with that testing and how much of it we share with parents, and that was going to be one of my questions. But I also want to ask about the Fanta-Simpinella test that we give in the fall and the spring. Are we still giving that? I thought we gave that up.
The Fanta-Simpinella is only done with those students that are really struggling, and it's done by the literacy specialist. That was changed last year, because all students had been getting that, and what we were finding is that it was not being given with the appropriate fidelity. So now what we're doing is, students will have a running record, and then there will be another level to that, and if they're still struggling, the literacy specialist or the specialist that that student works with will give the Fanta-Simpinella.
And does everybody get the Teachers College running records? Because that's something that I hadn't noticed in prior years.
No, and if this says Teachers College running records, that should not be on there. It's only the A to Z running records. That means this is not the latest one that it put.
So are we going to get this report back with all the corrections? It seemed to me it'd be helpful to see them all on the same with all the corrections.
So I guess my question...
With all the corrections, that would...
So I think there were some questions about COGAT in the fifth grade and...
Yeah, I have that.
The other one. So the question is, is there any reason we need to approve this tonight?
No.
Okay, so there's no motion on the table, so if you would take the comments for what they are, make the corrections. I did want to ask, it actually, this goes to placement for math for sixth grade. It reflects that we're using these STAR assessments, which I presume are the winter stars, for sixth-grade placements. I will voice this here. I voiced it before. I do not like the idea of using the STAR for placement. Kids are getting different tests. They're not all being tested on the same test, and using that test is probably not the right way to be doing this. Ms. O'Neill?
All right, so I hate to say, you know, all this business about being uneducated, but I was for 36 years, and the STAR test is a screen test. It's not, it's got, the level of it is too low, the ceiling on it is too low, to really assess kids for proper placement. You need to find, that is a general screen. You might want to take and say, okay, below a certain score, we're not going to advance these kids onto more testing. But then you have to get down to the nitty-gritty of who's really in what category. Is someone really above level? But using the STAR, and that's why we have classes that are overpopulated with kids who don't belong, and then they say, "Well, the ALP program's not working." Well, it's not working, because you got the wrong kids in the program. So to relook at your use of the STAR, I think we misuse it entirely.
Can I stop there for a second?
Sure, Ms. Olson.
Because, thank you. That's interesting, because I do think like what the test, it's important to look at like what we're using the test for, and I also fundamentally can't understand why we are placating second graders onward in terms of testing. I've yet to ever see any of the data strummed out, so I've asked for that multiple times, and I never got that. But in terms of like the, I think it was putting the wrong kids or right kids or whatever was just going to get into the ALP program, I've actually been told by administrators, like there is a certain kind of student that fits an ALP profile by administrators, so that's in terms of, you know, there's certain students, I guess we're told like, you know, there's square pegs, there's kids that whether it's like behaviorally or this or that, but that they're purposely, there's a particular profile student, and not all students will fit that profile. And in my experience, I know that the best we can do is continue to have a growth mindset and continue to actually help students all achieve maximum levels. So I guess my question here is, not only like what are we using the test for, but it's a bigger question than that, like, why? You know, I didn't figure the math, but it's just, if there's some faulty test, there's some tests that keep taking over and over again. Once students are in an ALP program, then they're not being tested, or maybe they are being tested, but they're not taken back out. So there's so many loopholes. There's different, there's different levels of endpoints eventually at New Lebanon versus Parkway versus Riverside, and so there's so many different, there's so many flaws to this program, and it's hard to take a test and say, "This test is going to determine this particular placement for this particular child," because they're then tracked all the way through. So I think we have to take a look at, as we said, what exactly are you using the test for?
Ms. Dayton?
There's a universal screening in the very earliest grade, and then after that, students can enter at higher grades if they test in.
I understand that. No, I do understand that. I mean, I've been given the whole re-roll. I get that, but I'm saying like, once somebody's in, like, there's no, in elementary, I'm speaking at elementary school levels, because I've heard a lot from parents in elementary school levels, and it does base directly from the test scores, so it is quite relevant to what we're talking about, is that once they're in, there is no gatekeeping. So in terms, like, if somebody takes the test because they got tutored or studied the right thing, or for some reason took it enough time, and sort of memorized the questions, or got it from siblings, that then they're in this program, and they're sort of tracked at the higher level all the way through without, and this isn't just, you know, this is from, I've heard this from so many heads, especially in certain schools that are a very sort of high-stress environment, that they're, that, you know, you can continue to get, no matter what grade, you're not taken back out ever. So it doesn't really make any more placement for, it should be sort of a place for more movement. And I know at certain schools, I don't know, I know particularly at North Street, maybe some other schools, some students were told, "There is no more space available." So even if you got 100 on this, even if you got 100 on this test, there will be no place for you. So it's, and that, you know, and that's not a personal experience, that was another, a parent shared with me that from another child. So it's really, I think we need to look at, as I said, what we're using the test for and how. It's a bigger, it's a bigger question. It's not one that we're going to answer right now, but somebody needs to say it, because it's sort of a bomb to what we're doing to our kids in terms of how much we're testing and how we're using it, and how we're dividing and segregating kids based on that with faulty evidence. So I just want to make sure that's out there.
Dr. Francis?
I actually just had a different thing I wanted to bring up again that I said at our last meeting, but my hope is that, you know, as we're discussing how we use our digital tools and how we use, you know, this kind of personalized learning, that we keep in mind that it would be great to get to a point where we didn't necessarily need things like the STAR testing or some of these other tests, because our digital tools will be keeping track of what kids know, and that there will not be the high-stress testing, because they will be being evaluated on an ongoing basis in terms of what skills they have acquired, and that that would be one big advantage to have, to use of digital tools, that would obviate some of our needs for testing.
Ms. Stowe?
I don't want, thank you, I was just going to thank you. Just continuing with that theme, Dayton, I just, to go back to the pendulum argument of before, I mean, you just always have to make sure you find the right balance, and I don't want to, I think that testing is important, so I don't want anyone to walk away with that, because it's certainly important to always have a quantitative analysis of children rather than just, you know, an individual teacher's assessment. It's nice to look at the whole picture of the student, and, but I think that's why you put this assessment scheduled together for us, and, and I'm sorry that we're nitpicking, but it's helpful...
Not a problem.
To then just make sure that we're doing everything at the right time and the right grades, and that we're balancing it always throughout, so that we're continually assessing our children, but doing it in a stress-free as possible way. So, and I think we're all trying to go for the same goal there.
I understand. No problem.
Anybody else on this? All right, so I guess we will not take this up tonight as an action item. We will carry it forward to our next agenda as an action item. And we'll look for explanation of the changes on the front. All right, so next up would be transfers. Does somebody want to make a motion to put this on the table? All right, is there a second on budget transfers? All right, so motion by Ms. O'Neill, second by Ms. Stowe, Ms. O'Donnell?
We're presenting to you a budget of transfers from the current school year. I'm happy to take any questions.
Okay, so I'll, all right, I'm going to stick with the theme I talked about last year, found money. The second item I get was accounting correction. The first item, no. We've expanded our HR system, which sounds really good. Sounds like something we should do. However, we paid for that by finding money in a program where we didn't have as many interns as we thought we were going to have. That's found money, and just because we found money doesn't mean we should go buy something we didn't anticipate. Unless it's an emergency, I really don't like that this is our practice. We talked about it last year, and here we are at the beginning of this year, and we're doing it again. So I am not going to vote for this budget transfer. Ms. O'Neill?
I want to talk about found money or finding money. It was my impression last year when we passed the budget that we had included $20,000 for the advanced science program at the high school. And I've been told that that money doesn't exist, and so therefore I am asking for the administration to look and find money to support this very worthwhile program. If you come down to it, you look at the science budget, I think it's like $8 a kid or something like that. And this program is a program that you can't budget for, because the kid's projects are so unique that they need access to money in an easy fashion, and not knowing that he's going to have these funds for the year is going to limit what his students are able to do. So I am asking you to find money for this really worthy project that we should, in this coming year's budget and budgets thereon, always put in at least $20,000 for this program. It's a program that brings unbelievably good publicity to our school system. We couldn't buy that publicity. So I think it's worthwhile for us to look for that money to support that program this year and put it in the budget for the years to come.
Ms. Dayton?
Laurie, I have a question about the underlying worth of these budget transfers, and I am not willing to make a blanket statement on whether I'm going to vote for it or not until I understand the value of it. Question, does this get us closer to eliminating manual Excel spreadsheet kind of data entry? If so, I'm all for it. Number two, does this get us closer to position control? And number three, when you say we can recruit outside our area using software, does that mean we can diversify our teaching staff and hire more minority staff from different places?
So I'll answer one and two, which I think is yes and perhaps yes. Yes, this is getting us to the electronic stage. We're there now, and we really need to push that, you know, in all areas of business. I'm certainly seeing it in my area. So yes, this is featuring, it features online forms and the whole, you know, concept of storage online as well. Position control, we actually are looking at the same company, because now we have several modules with the same company. We're actually going to be, I think it's tomorrow, we're going to be looking at a proposal from them, so we can figure out, you know, how much money are we going to need to implement a system-based position control software program? So I'm actually really excited about that, being the one managing a spreadsheet of like 2,000 rows. I think it would be much better in a system, just to reduce the human... better in a, um, in a, in a system, just to reduce the, the human error aspect. Um, I can't, I, I don't know if I should be the one to speak to number three. Um, I don't know if that's something, if Tony would like to speak to, or if, uh, Ms. Johnson would like to speak to that, or if you wouldn't mind just repeating the question.
State of Connecticut and Greenwich are the same. We have a shortage of teachers from diverse backgrounds, and it says to me in this budget transfer that it will allow us to recruit beyond our geographic area. Will that help us in that effort?
It, it's still early, um, to be able to give you that, to, to say that it will be able to. One of the things that made that feature, um, really enticing to us is that when we are recruiting talented staff, we tend to rely on, um, applicants that come through AppleTrack here on our website. We rely on Connecticut Reap, LinkedIn. Um, by using the proactive recruiting, it allows us to recruit all over the United States. So I would like to think that would increase some of our efforts as we do recognize that diversity is an issue, and we are trying to work beyond that. It is premature to say for, for certain if that is in fact the case. Um, just as much as it allows us to look at the profiles of others, um, they not only will, they will be directed to our website and, and provide, um, gain more information to see if we are a district of choice. It's also very interesting to us to know that if we are looking in a particular shortage area where an individual in California is, happens to be certified in our area as well, they will, um, receive information from our district with, which can allow us to begin a conversation. So again, still really early stages. Um, the company has had much success with it, and there are districts throughout the country that have tapped into it. We do recognize that the diversity is an issue in our district, and we're just trying to tap into other avenues so that we can be a leader here at Fairfield County in increasing that diversity issue.
Just to clarify on this, I don't dispute the value of, of purchasing this add-on. I think it's probably great. Uh, it's a process, actually, for me. It, it's that when there is a budget savings, we always seem to have an offset of something we wanted to buy. So that's where my issue lies.
Ms. O'Neill.
So this program sounds, um, really good, it's something we, we want, but I wondered how the decision was made to choose going in this direction, not this particular program, but using the money for this, because if I recall correctly, in last year's budget, there was a request for twenty thousand dollars for automating summer school registration, and I don't believe that got through. So I, for me, it's, what is a decision process, and I don't really expect someone to answer it tonight, but do we have a process by which we decide we're going to do this and not this, or is it sort of, uh, more spontaneous? Um, so that would be, that would be my question, that we should have a process, we should have priorities, so that we have a reason for, for going the directions that we decide.
Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, uh, the motion is to accept the budget transfers. All those in favor? Ms. Holson? All right, so that's six, nine and a, six, one. All right, thank you. The next item is financial and staffing report. Ms. O'Donnell.
Okay, so since this is the first meeting of the, the new school year, um, you, you are seeing in front of you, um, the year-end business report, so for period ended June thirtieth. You may recall during the months of, I guess it was maybe April, May, and June, uh, we were closely monitoring the budget, uh, we were concerned about, um, well, our projection was just about zero, so, uh, we did come in at that, we came, it came in very tight, uh, we had savings of about six hundred, I think it's sixteen thousand dollars, which is point three eight percent of the budget, very, very tough margin for us to manage to, but I, I do need to thank all my colleagues and all the departments for really, um, you know, really taking a step up and, and helping us try to achieve those savings. And so those savings actually outlined, uh, by major category, I think it's in, it might be the last pack, page in the packet. Um, and I'm happy to answer any other questions on the report.
I have two questions. One is the staffing. I've mentioned this at the last meeting, I know this is the year-end report, and it's like what the open headcount is and, and where we are like in the interview process, and it's dated June thirtieth. Um, if we could just get a current, and Shemaine, I think Bob took the action to do that, because now it's, you know, almost October, so all of that information is, um, not current. And then I have a question on the school lunch, and it's a personal question as well. Um, the difference in staffing, because we had three, um, staff on family medical leave and five on paid. Our personal leave, are they still on leave? Are we still going to increase our staff cost, or are those, um, staff members back from leave?
I'm not positive, but I think that there are still two staff members that are out on leave, but we are expecting them to come back within the next month or so.
So I've got a whole bunch, because there's a lot of interesting stuff in here, but one is I was looking at the historical budget variance, I think it's, uh, it's on page two, and it showed basically the big categories where there's the variance from money spent and money unspent. Um, and it's funny, I thought we'd see some consistency along budget lines, so I, I don't know, Lori, you've tried to figure out what the trend is in this chart.
I'm sorry, could you just, I missed--
The historical budget variance data, it's on page two.
Okay.
And so these are the big categories, I guess, where we had unspent funds?
Yep.
I, I thought there'd be some kind of a trend, but I, I'm not seeing it. Am I missing that? Is there, I thought there would be like one area that would jump at where we are overbudgeting or even underbudgeting for that matter.
Um, no, I mean, I'd have to kind of, I'd probably have to go back and study and look at a little bit more of what were some of the savings in each category specifically to be able to answer the question.
I, I mean, I'm just thinking about that as a, just another tool for planning purposes for the next budget. All right, anybody else have? Ms. O'Neill.
On page five, there's a, a language arts professional learning thing, uh, amount for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We've had this in the budget for a number of years, and it's not few, but I think, uh, I'd like to have, um, the language arts coordinator when a report comes to explain, um, the benefits of this program, if, if it's still something we need to continue to fund, and, and what data do we have to show that, um, the students have benefited from this program? I know it started pretty much in the Title I programs, uh, but then it had spread, um, so, uh, just to have some more data on, on that, that item. Also, um, on that, uh, Title I monies, the grants, um, to find out how that money is distributed to those Title I buildings and what that money, um, is spent, uh, for, um, you know, is it being used for field trips, is it being used for personnel, is it being used for curriculum? Uh, and how is it being used? Because there's some question about the distribution of that money, uh, in some of the schools. Uh, you know, if there's a, a formula for it or whatever, but to, to learn more about the Title I, um, money, um, that's all I have on that.
So I'll ask a question about the, uh, the grant money given back, it's on page one. And every year we seem to give back a, a portion of grant money, and it seems like the private schools seem to have that problem too. Um, but it, I, I know we've been tracking this, so how are we giving back close to ninety thousand dollars in grant money?
Unfortunately, we have to give some of our Title I monies to the private schools in the district, and if they do not spend it, we have to give it back to the state. We don't have a choice. We go after them every year, tell them what they can spend their money on, how they can spend it, and they don't spend it.
So, Anne, there's, there's two boxes, right? There's the public funds on the left, and we return ninety thousand dollars. Non-public funds were returned seventy-seven thousand. Are you saying the private school money is in our bucket and that's what's being returned?
It's the total allocation of the monies that we get. We get money for the public schools and for the private schools. I'm not aware of the, um, I don't know why we sent money back on Title I that for the public schools--
Well, I don't know if that's Title I, otherwise, so it'd be good to know what's in that bucket. It's eighty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars. What's in there that we--
I'll, I'll check with Irene. I used to do Title I in my former district, so I know how the, the funding works and what you have to do, and generally, the private schools are difficult.
Yeah, I mean, there, there is a possibility that maybe this funding will get spent.
There is carryover money in Title I. You have to spend up to eighty percent or eighty-five percent of it, and then you get the fifteen percent that you can start the following year with.
It'd be good to know, Ms. Dayton, if you're there.
I just wanted to point out on page eight, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses. Is this page eight?
Six.
I'm sorry. On page six, under revenue, I want everyone to notice the second line, education cost-sharing grant. Go over to the third column, one million, four hundred and two thousand and sixty-five dollars. So if anyone says that we were zeroed out, they are incorrect.
Um, so I've got a question about the, well, not even a question really, about the staffing chart on three. I think it's maybe just a learning as we think about next year's budget, and obviously we haven't seen the staffing chart for this year, but I, I know we've increased some heads because of pre-K and otherwise. Um, two things. One, Evolve continues to confound me. Uh, I'm not going to get into a deep discussion about it tonight, uh, but basically I think we need to consider whether that's something we want to carry forward with. The other is, every year we end up needing to add those pre-K classrooms, some we know about, some are unanticipated, and I think it requires us to build that into our budget in a more appreciable, transparent way, because we've added them in the past without really having that headcount set aside. So I know we talked about this in the spring, but I just want to carry that forward so that when we get our first budget, we understand there's positions being held for those added classrooms for the following year. Ms. O'Neill.
Uh, speaking of Evolve, the assistant deans now for a number of years have been funded through an Evolve process. The board had voted not to have assistant deans, and I think we need to have a discussion about that again. I don't think it's fair to keep, uh, funding them through an Evolve process.
Ms. Dayton.
I, I totally support that. It's confusing to the RTM that eventually has to improve our budget. If we can't explain it, they'll never understand. So I think we need to look at the Evolve process and figure out if there's a simplified way to allocate staff while still being flexible to the needs of the students in the classroom when they walk in in September.
I just want to comment on capital, like I always do. Lori, thank you for continuing to update this chart, continuing with Dan to winnow down the amount of projects we have. We still have one hundred and forty-two active projects. That is a lot. So when we do our capital S this year, let's step back for a second and say, what do we have on our plate already, and what can we really do in the following year? And I think we need to be realistic with that. Ms. Raven.
Uh, ditto. And then thank you, Lori, for doing a little bit more of a graphic, because I think we talked about that in the budget subcommittees, to get a visual for the chart, to have the, um, high chart, very helpful.
Ms. O'Neill.
Well, I wanted to know when we were going to vote on the bleacher options, um, if this is in terms of the Cardinal Field Improvement, um, because how we vote on the bleachers is going to impact that, that total, um, project, and I think, um, we need to do, have that vote soon. The other thing is the entry to the media center, uh, the entry to the Greenwich High School and the media center, um, that needs to be looked at. Um, I'm assuming that's what that first committee will do, be a feasibility study, to find out that we probably can't do that, because it's going to be astronomically expensive because of water and piping and whatever else under there. So we need to settle these projects sooner rather than later and decide where we're going with them. But I'm especially interested in that vote on the bleachers.
Dr. Jones.
And we should have that ready for our next meeting. We did get the numbers, but it was very late on Friday, and we want to really review them carefully before we bring them to you.
All right. Any other discussion on the financial and staffing report? So the motion was made by Michael Hughes. You haven't done it. We need a motion. All right, so I'll, I'll move, we accept the financial and staffing report, is there a second? So Ms. Dayton, any further discussion? All those in favor? Ms. Olson?
Aye. Aye.
All right, so that passes. Um, just next up is the, uh, agenda plan. So Dr. Jones just noted Cardinal Stadium, probably coming in October. Um, we talked briefly about maybe a DLE report at some point. Um, I'll put that as a TBD, and we can take that up with Dr. Jones when we meet with her next, and talk about what that might look like. Uh, food services, we would add to October as well. Anything else?
We need, we need to find the ALP science.
Uh, ALP science, so we actually have that already as a TBD, as a carryover from last time, yep. All right, any other items? All right, so with that, uh, one, Julie, thanks for sticking around. Thank the Alliance for the written report, they continue an ed written report, we've done that at the beginning, we accepted them, thank you. Um, but thank you for submitting, thank you for the great work you do. Uh, with Dr. Francis, did you want to say something? Um, I moved to adjourn? Oh, yeah, any second on that? Second one, Ms. Doe, all those in favor of adjourning? Ms. Olson, do you want to adjourn?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.
Bye, thank you, bye.